We are here for Council Bill eighteen dash zero two three three, ordinance of estimates. Excuse me. Ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and nineteen. We're also here for Council Bill eighteen dash zero two four zero, operating budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and nineteen. Okay. So, my charter school, okay. So, who's here from a city agency? If you're here from a city agency or from the school system, can you stand up real quick? Okay, alright. And you guys, Mr. Commissioner Frank and John, you guys, your school system over here, okay, everyone's good, alright. So, who's here from the, a member of the public? If you could stand up if you're a member of the public that's here to testify?
Can we testify?
Or not testify, I'm sorry, there's no testimony at this, or we'll be, I'm gonna explain the whole process. Okay, everyone's here for the charter school issue?
Yes.
Alright, is there anyone, a member of the public who's here, who is not here for the charter school issue, but is here for some other issue? Let me say that once more, is there any member of the public who's not with Department of Finance and not directly with the school system, who's here for an issue other than the charter school issue? Okay. So, here's what we're gonna be doing today, I just wanna give you a brief overview before we get started, the folks from the school system in BBMR go through this so they understand. So, first, we're gonna have a presentation from BBMR, which is the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. They're going to be speaking with respect to the entire city budget with the exception of city schools. They're not gonna talk about city schools at all. They may say one snippet in there that this is our total contribution, which is two hundred eighty-one million and change, plus or minus something.
Two seventy-eight.
Two seventy-eight. But, they're not gonna talk about city schools or any of that. So, we're gonna let them present, and then council members are gonna ask them questions. And then when council members have exhausted those questions, we'll be done with that portion of the hearing. Then, we're gonna get to city schools, and the CFO, John Walker, is gonna, he's gonna introduce his team. He's got Chief of Staff to the CEO, Allison Perkins-Cohen's here somewhere, I know Commissioner Frank, one of the nine commissioners is here, and he's gonna present a presentation that he put together and sent to the council last night. Then, as part of that presentation, I've asked him, because I knew this was gonna happen, you all were gonna show up, to talk about the charter school issue specifically, how we got here, where we're at, and where we're going moving forward, okay? And then, Mr. Walker and/or his team are gonna take questions from the council. Once the council's exhausted those questions, we're gonna go into recess. Then, at five PM, we're gonna come back for what we call City Council Taxpayer Night. During that, we're gonna have, we're gonna start off with two presentations, one from BBMR, standing here is Bob Seneme, he's the city's budget director, he's like Mr. Walker's equivalent, but for the whole city. He's gonna present for about five minutes, he's, here's how much money we're bringing in, here's where we're spending the money, here's what's the latest and greatest, what's new with our budget this year. And then, Mr. Walker's gonna do the same thing for five minutes, plus, he's gonna give an overview of the charter issue, kinda where we were at, how we got here, where we're at now, where we're going. And then, we're only going to take testimony of the pub, from the public. So, the council will not be asking questions other than questions of clarification. You said the number eight hundred, I couldn't hear you, did you mean nine hundred, those types of things. So, the five PM hearing slot, well, again, will be reserved for members of the public to give testimony. So, I see you, I appreciate what you're doing, and I see you patiently holding that up, and I only say this so that you know the order of how we're gonna handle things today, and I don't want, and I, no disrespect, I don't want you to get an arm cramp doing that, but we all know, we wanna be clear that we all know you're here, and why you're here, and at which points in today's process you will get more information, and at which point in today's process you'll have an opportunity to participate, and we hope that you will be here to participate in that. Is everyone who's here from the public for the charter school issue clear on what the process is? Is there anyone who has any questions about that process as I've explained it? Every, so, I will assume that everyone who's here today for that issue understands the process, is good with, you may not like it, but you know what the process is, and you're clear on it, and there's no questions on it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that. Right, and one thing I should've added, this taxpayer night hearing that we have, we only have it once per year, this is kinda the kickoff for the FY nineteen budget process, as a matter of practice, we are not allowed to engage with you. We're here to, we're here to listen, we have staff to the committee, and staff to the council president's office, and staff to the mayor's office, who we'll introduce in a minute, whose job it is tonight to be here to support the council, to make sure they're writing down what it is you're saying. That hearing will be televised, we have gone back, every year, we go back and we watch that before we have the budget hearings in a week and a half, or two weeks from today. So, we're paying attention to what you're saying, but we're not getting into dialogue or a debate with you about it. Our role here is to, is to listen to what you all have to say. So, again, I may ask clarifying questions as Chair of the Committee, but it's not gonna be a debate or anything like that. Okay, so, before we get started, we've got, I'm joined to my immediate left by Council President Bernard C. Jack Young, to his left, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the Fourteenth, Councilman Zeke Cohen from the First, Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the Thirteenth, a member of the committee, I can't see who's first, Councilman Dr. John Bullock from the Ninth, Councilman Chris Burnett from the Eighth, Councilman Ed Risinger from the Tenth, and then to my right is Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the Seventh, Councilman Isaac Yitzi Schleifer from the Fifth, also a member of the committee, Council Vice President, Councilwoman Sharon Green-Milton from the Sixth, a member of the committee, Councilman Bill Henry from the Fourth District, a member of the committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, she works for Council Services, so she's staff to the committee, her job is to support the committee's work, she doesn't work for the mayor, or the council president, or any council member, she works for the committee. And then, we've been joined by the Legislative Director for Council President Young, Kara Kuntz. We've been joined by Rebecca Tab, who is council to the city council, and then, we have David Simpson, who is our fiscal analyst. Representing Mayor Catherine Pugh is Karan Banks, and Poetry Deal. Did I get all the senior folks? Okay, I think I'm good. Bob, if you could take it away, could you please introduce, why don't you introduce your entire team, please, if, just say name and what their role is.
Sure thing. So, good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, and members of the council.
One other thing, please, please be sure for whoever's testifying to speak clearly into the microphone, please, and thank you.
Sure thing. So, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, members of the city council, my name is Bob Seneme, I'm the city's budget director, and I'm here today to present the two thousand and nineteen budget overview, and I'll introduce staff real quickly, if you could just raise your hand, so first, to my left, Caroline Sturgis, Deputy Director, Pedro Oponte, Director of Revenue, Rita Young, Revenue Analyst, Daniel Ramos, he's our Budget Operations Director, and then back here, Darren Liu, Revenue Analyst, Rachel Zinn, Budget Analyst, Mira, Mira Green, Budget Analyst, and Jessica Clark, Budget Analyst, and Jonathan Marancy, Budget Analyst. We're missing Christopher Harrington as well, he's out today, he's our analyst for the Health Department. So, we'll get started, we'll take it right away, so.
One other, give me one second, Bob. Colleagues, I'm gonna ask that, we hold off on all questions until the end, save, I didn't hear what you said, or what was that number again, or could you repeat yourself? Everyone a mental build to that, colleagues?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Seneme, take it away.
Sure, so the agenda for today, we're giving you an overview of the fiscal nineteen budget, so, five topics, first is a quick overview and some highlights, second, we'll talk about our, what we call our current level of service forecast that we did in the fall, and then, we'll get into the recommended budget on the revenue side, on the expenditure side for fixed costs, and then, we'll talk a little bit about the expenditure budget by the mayor's pillars. And so, presentation should be about twenty-five, thirty minutes, and again, we'll welcome any questions at the end of the presentation. So, first, just an overview of our recommended budget by the numbers, we are recommending two point eight billion dollars in the operating budget, that's a one point seven percent increase versus fiscal eighteen, we're recommending six hundred and eighty point nine million dollars in the capital budget, that's a decrease of thirty-nine point one percent. And I should mention that the capital budget fluctuates quite a bit from year to year, that's due to, mostly in the utility funds, we often have projects that are front-loaded every two years, it's based on the timing of the project and access to the bond market, so that's not a change in service levels. On the general fund only, the budget is one point eight eight billion dollars, that's a two point six percent increase versus fiscal eighteen. There's nine thousand five hundred positions that we're recommending in the nineteen budget, it's an increase of a hundred and sixty-two positions, which we'll talk about momentarily, about where that, where that comes from. So, first, just some quick highlights, the nineteen budget includes various strategies that are supporting the mayor's Violence Reduction Initiative, we're funding a hundred police positions, and we're expanding the Safe Streets Program, among many other, many other strategies, which we'll discuss further. On the educational side and the youth side, we're providing three hundred and seventy million dollars of total city support for city schools, and we have an additional twelve point four million dollar contribution into the youth fund this year. We're also kicking off the Neighborhood Impact Investment Fund, there's fifty-five million dollars appropriated, those are proceeds expected to go into this fund, there will be a separate, specific hearing about that as part of the agency hearings, so I won't touch too much on that today. The budget overall maintains core city services, we have few, if any, reductions, and we also are beginning funding of the city's Digital Transformation Plan, which is our IT strategic plan. On the revenue side, you'll see in a moment, we're expanding our speed and red light camera program, and we're also proposing to increase fees for EMS transports in the nineteen budget. So, if you could, if we could take a step back to the fall for a moment, so, in the fall, I had a chance to brief members of the council in small groups about what we call our current level of service forecast, we call it CLS, and basically, what CLS is, it's our, it's our starting point to the planning process, it's a look at what the budget would look like if we made no changes, no service level changes, we only capture anything that we're legally required to do in the fiscal year, and we account for inflation for our services. So, it's really a finance-centric exercise, and it's really how we kick off the process. And when we did that exercise this year, we were ending, we started in a, in a positive position with a small surplus, and for those who've been on the council for a while, you know that this goes back since I've been here, we've always started the planning process with a deficit, some very large. The reason that we started in a better position this year is really threefold, one is, we've made, collectively, the city has made some good policy choices going back many years that are still benefiting us, so, the health benefits reform that we talked about in the previous hearing, the F and P reform that goes all the way back to two thousand and ten, and the ERS pension reform, those items get quickly forgotten, but they are saving us money on a recurring basis in each fiscal year, and we're still, we're still bearing fruit from those, those, what we think were smart reforms. We have been aided by a very strong and steady economy, frankly, the economy has been chugging along pretty nicely for the last few years, we'll see more detail about that when we go through revenue, and that has certainly helped. And then, frankly, just a little bit of it was just good luck, a couple things coming together in fiscal nineteen, which we'll talk about in a moment. So, when we started the process, we were looking at a positive balance, and it was an unusual position frankly to be in as we started the planning process, but what I encouraged the mayor and her senior team to do, as we were, and agency heads, as we were walking through the budget process, was let's, if we have new investments that we'd like to make, let's make sure we offset those on a recurring basis, and devote any additional money to some much-needed one-time investments, to make sure we stay on a, on a strong and sustainable fiscal path in future budget years. And so, getting into the revenue detail, first, just a, just a little budget one oh one about where the money comes from, this is our general fund revenue, so we're projecting one point eight eight two billion of general fund revenue in fiscal nineteen, and you can see that by far, the blue piece, nearly half of our revenue is coming from property taxes. And then, in descending order, next is, the next highest source, income taxes, highway user revenue, state aid, and then, other local taxes and recollection and transfer taxes, and we'll touch on each of those in more detail in a moment. So, this is general fund revenue as a whole, the far blue bar is the projection for fiscal nineteen, we are, we're about two hundred million dollars higher in recurring general fund revenues than we were at the, at the time, pre-recession levels, I consider pre-recession levels two thousand and ten, that's the year that things really took a turn for the worse, but since then, you'll notice that it's been slow and steady growth over the last nine or ten years. Now, as we talked earlier, we're well into an economic recovery, we, in looking at the data for, you know, GDP growth and economic activity for the, for the national economy, this is now approaching the longest recovery period since World War Two, we're, right now, we're in the middle of the second-longest recovery period since World War Two, and within a few months or within a year will be the longest, so that's, it's bizarre frankly, and so, we're concerned about what could be ahead of us in the years, and even in the immediate, short-term future, but so far, the growth has been pretty steady. Looking at our individual revenue sources, the big ones at least in more detail, so, property tax has grown twenty-three percent since the trough, which was in fiscal thirteen. Now, the, the low point of property tax was in two thousand and thirteen, whereas the worst part of the recession was in two thousand and ten into two thousand and eleven, the reason for that is that only a third of properties get reassessed each year, so it takes three years to get a citywide cycle of declines in assessment values that we experienced during that recession, and we saw that in fiscal thirteen. And then, since then, you can see it's been steady growth on property taxes. This is some detail, more detail on the group-by-group assessment increases, you'll notice that we had five, I'm sorry, four years of decline between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fourteen, again, that's coming out of the housing crash that we experienced in that recession, but since then, we've had five consecutive years of assessment growth. And this year, for the night, for the fiscal two thousand and nineteen budget, the group that was reassessed was Group Three, that's the group on the southern part there, so you can see it includes some of the harbor neighborhoods, it includes south, southwest, and parts of west Baltimore. One area for concern that we had when we looked at the data this year is, you'll notice that the growth this year overall for Group Three was three point six percent, that's still growth, but it was lower than the previous four years. That growth is made up of eight point five percent commercial property growth, triennial growth, and residential growth, triennial growth in Group Three was actually flat. That's concerning to us, when we looked at more of the details of the data, we learned that forty-two percent of residential properties actually lost value versus the last assessment, fifty-eight percent of the properties gained value, that's, that's a bigger chunk of losses than we've seen in recent history, so much so, that we took the unusual step this year of the city decided to appeal a handful of residential property assessments that looked very low. We've always appealed commercial assessments, 'cause if you see a big property that sold for one value, it was assessed significantly below, we can appeal that and get more revenue for the city, we've always, we've typically shied away from residential appeals, but there was enough of an impact this year that we, we started to look at this, and it might be something that we continue to do in future years. In terms of tax credits, the city provides many tax credits, I'll focus on one in particular here, this is what we call the Targeted Homeowner Tax Credit, it's the, you'll hear referred to as twenty cents by two thousand and twenty. The idea was that for an owner-occupied property, for somebody who owns their home and lives in the city, lives in that property, that we wanted to reduce the effective tax rate for those folks by twenty cents by fiscal year two thousand and twenty. And we're, we're in the second-to-last year of that program, so since the start of this program, the tax rate has been reduced, again, this comes in the form of a credit on the tax bill, the base rate for those folks is the same, but they get a credit that's, that's the equivalent of saving seventeen point four cents off of the base tax rate, which is two point two four per hundred dollars of assessed value. That's a seven point seven percent rate reduction for those folks over the course of this program, so it's been beneficial to many homeowners, it is costing the city a lot of money, the cost of this program is thirty million dollars per year, our expectation is that we will get to two thousand and twenty, that we'll complete, if we can, in two thousand and twenty, the last phase of this program, and then, we'll have to reevaluate whether we provide more tax relief, or depending on the economic situation, we might have to pause that and just maintain in future years, but we'd like to get to that two thousand and twenty commitment that was started by the prior, prior administration. On income tax, again, same story here, slow and steady growth, you'll notice that sixteen, sixteen looks a little out of place, that was what I had mentioned in the previous hearing, that that was a blip where we were over-distributed in fiscal sixteen, that is being taken out of our eighteen distribution, but again, since the recession, fiscal ten, we've seen strong growth in income tax, we have seen, I think I've shared with the council a couple times, we have seen higher net earner households locating in the city, that bears out when we look at income tax data, and when we look at census data as well, so we have had a noticeable shift, which has helped our income tax base grow over the last eight to ten years. The next largest source of revenue is highway user revenue, this is a state, source of state aid, and you'll see that for nineteen, we're projecting a hundred and forty-two point nine million dollars. What you don't see on this chart is that before, back, going back to fiscal seven, we were generating, it was two hundred and twenty million dollars worth of highway user revenue, so what happened was, during the recession, the state, if you recall, changed the formulas and kept more for their own general fund, and we have never fully recovered, even come close to fully recovering from that. So, even this year, after seven to eight years of slow, very slow growth, we're still almost eighty million dollars short of what we were bringing in in highway user revenue back in fiscal seven, and the impact of that is basically, we're doing less capital projects, we're doing less transportation-related capital projects because of that loss. On other sources of state aid, you'll notice there's a decline in fiscal nineteen, so, the big, the largest source of state aid after highway user revenue is what we call the Income Tax Disparity Grant, this is a, this is discretionary money that comes from the state to the city, it's general fund revenue that we can use for anything that we'd like, it is meant to equalize and protect the lower, the jurisdictions in Maryland that have lower per capita income tax receipts, and so, Baltimore is one of those jurisdictions, so we get benefit from this. What's happened though, in fiscal, between fiscal eighteen and nineteen, and again, this goes back to the income tax discussion, we have, we have, as we've gotten stronger in income tax, we are not the poorest jurisdiction in Maryland anymore, and I was looking at a report yesterday, if you go back to fiscal two thousand and ten, we were ranked twenty-third out of twenty-four Maryland jurisdictions in terms of per capita income tax receipts, now, we're only eighteenth out of twenty-four, and because of that, the state has pulled back, the formulas mean we have lost some aid. So, in one hand, on the one hand, we're gaining on income tax, but it is harming us on this particular source of, source of state aid. Recognition and transfer taxes, as we talked about before, this tends to be very volatile, the nineteen budget, again, is based on a five-year moving average of the actuals, so it's up to seventy-six point seven million is the budget for fiscal nineteen, as we talked earlier, we're bringing in about ninety-five million dollars in fiscal eighteen, so, we could, if the market activity remains strong, we could have a surplus in this source in nineteen, but I would caution that when the market turns, when and if it does, this revenue source tends to, tends to drop off very, very quickly. And so, we're still budgeting conservative this, again, on purpose, because we're concerned about when that turn comes, that we will lose revenue for this particular source. And then, finally, on the revenue side, traffic cameras, so you'll see here, this, this basically tells the story of the program, we had the program, the old program, it started, it peaked in fiscal twelve, we had the problems with the vendor, we had the problems with issuing incorrect tickets, the program was shut down, we basically brought in virtually no revenue from fiscal fifteen through fiscal seventeen, in eighteen, the program, of course, has restarted, and the announcement in March that we will, we will expand the program and add new cameras means that we can budget more for this source in fiscal nineteen, but again, a word of caution is that we have to be really careful, this is, you know, if we encounter a problem with the program, if it gets shut off for whatever reason, we don't want to over-rely on this particular source of revenue for recurring expenses. I should mention, one thing we've seen too, is as we expand the program, you know, we've hit a lot of the high-volume locations, so we're adding, still adding cameras at locations, but they tend to be lower and lower trafficked intersections, and so, we're not bringing in as much revenue per location for the new ones that have been put out. When we started, you know, there was, we always laughed, there's one on South Caton Avenue, when you get off the highway, and we were issuing hundreds of tickets a day for that one, some of the other ones that are more recent, you're not issuing very many tickets a day, partly because there's just not as much volume going through those, those areas. So, just again, a caution that we have to be careful about this particular revenue source, and be as conservative as possible to make sure we don't over-rely on it. Casino funds, casino revenue sources, the, we're budgeting five point one million dollars less than in fiscal eighteen for casino-related sources, and that is because, when we start, when we planned the eighteen budget, we were relying on state projections that frankly were uncertain, because the MGM casino down in Prince George's County had not opened yet. Now that it's open, and we have a better sense of the revenues, that has affected our, our revenue, and our fiscal nineteen total, I think is more reflective of what we're actually seeing now in terms of gambling revenues. And from bottom to top for these five, the first, fifteen, I'm sorry, thirteen point five is for the ground lease agreement, that's the money that the operator of the casino pays to Baltimore, it goes into the general fund. The next, the thirteen million dollars for Horseshoe, that's the local impact aid for the one-mile radius around the Horseshoe Casino, half of that comes to the city for, you know, handling things like policing, sanitation, traffic management in the area around the casino, the other half goes right to a benefits district, and this, it's called the South Baltimore Gateway Corporation, I believe is the name.
Partnership.
Partnership, I'm sorry, yeah, in the, in the south, that gets the, the other half. Next is the Pimlico Park Heights money, that's also local impact aid for the area directly surrounding the racetrack, most of that goes for development and capital projects in the Park Heights neighborhood, or other areas in the northwest. Five point five of table games revenue is split half between Wreckin' Parks and school construction, and then, the final piece, the light blue at the top, is payment the casino makes on the property taxes for the casino garage, and that goes, that's directly deposited into the general fund. Okay, so that's the revenue side in a nutshell, on the expenditure side first, to touch on some fixed costs. So, fixed costs, these are the parts of the budget that we can, that we are a little bit harder to control in the short term, they're either fixed by law or by contract, they're not immovable, but it takes a while to get them moving in the right direction, so we pay very close attention to these costs. The four big categories are our pension contributions to ERS and F and P, the red is the required maintenance of effort payment to the city schools, again, required by state law, the purple is retiree health benefits, so we're providing benefits or partial subsidy for city employees that have retired, and then, the green is debt service, so those are principal interest payments on prior-year borrowing that we're required to pay, of course, by, by law. The blue, the other fixed costs are the things that are literally other things to really keep the lights on, things like utility costs, workers' compensation, things that you can't really turn off in the short term, we, again, we can control those, there are things we can do to try to contain the cost, but when we build our budget, we assume that a big chunk is already locked up for these particular costs. And one way we, one way we evaluate how well we're doing at controlling these costs is to look at fixed costs as a percent of the overall general fund revenue budget, and you'll notice that back in fiscal twelve, which was before some of those ten-year plan reforms on health benefits and ERS, we were hovering around forty-eight percent of our revenue was consumed by fixed costs. Since then, because of some of those reforms, and because our revenue has grown steadily, we've been under forty-five percent in every year, so that's a good sign, but it's also something that we have to pay very close, close attention to. And more specifically on fixed costs, first, ERS, the blue line you see there is our contribution to the civilian ERS pension system, and if you notice, since fiscal thirteen, which is when the reforms were done, we've been basically flat, that's really great news for us, that's one of the reasons the picture in nineteen looks so good, we have not seen costs grow for that system. For F and P, the reforms that we did back in two thousand and ten, it, it, it helped us from two thousand and eleven through thirteen, if you notice, the red line was steady, but even since then, those costs have continued to grow, even net of the reforms that we did that are being challenged by the fire and police unions, so, these are both areas that we have to pay very close attention to, I think the civilian system looks good for net, for now, F and P is something that we're looking very closely at, because the costs continue to grow beyond what I think the city can afford in the, in the long term. On the health benefits side, this is the slide I'd mentioned when we had the discussion about, about benefits, our big Our big reforms were done in fiscal 13. This is, the gray bar is what our healthcare costs would have been without reform, if we just didn't make any changes and just assumed the rate of healthcare growth in the market. The reforms we did in fiscal 13 got us, really diverged that path, got us on a savings, on the path to savings. Our costs have grown a little bit since then. And then the big dip in 19, the good news is that we rebid our, both our prescription drug contract and our medical contract. The prescription drug contract used to be with Express Scripts, it's now with CVS Caremark. We are seeing significant savings from that contract. And then we rebid our medical contracts and we consolidated for our active employees from nine plans down to four. Also got some savings from rebidding there. So some of those savings are because of the administrative costs. We had a, we had very few people choosing a select number of plans, so we eliminated those plans and guided folks into one of the remaining four. There's a blue choice plan, both a standard and high option, and there's an HMO option as well. We still, even after all those reforms, we still have on our balance sheet unfunded liabilities in both the fire and police and ERS and OPEB, which is Health Liability System. So, you know, we're not fully funded in either of those systems. And again, we have to keep a careful eye on that to make sure that these costs don't continue to, continue to grow. So moving on to the, more of the service delivery side of the budget, I wanted to share with folks today some of the key initiatives that are in the fiscal 19 budget. I should mention that, of course, this is just the highlights. Agency heads will be coming in, of course, over the next, over the week after Memorial Day to share more details. I'm just touching on some of the high level, some of the big highlights in this presentation. So I wanted to walk through those, through those real quickly. So first, in terms of new initiatives in this year's budget, we have added, as I mentioned earlier, $9 million for 100 police positions. And we've also added back the $5.5 million that was cut in the fiscal 18 budget for police. So the sum of those two actions is $14.5 million adjustment up to police. I, I'm careful about referring to this as a service change because as we've talked, police department has, has really been spending about, on average, $20 million above budget. So by restoring some of those positions that were lost to them earlier, we're trying to get them closer, a budget that's more really realistic to what they're actually spending. I believe, and, you know, I would, I would, I would ask folks to ask police when they come in here, they need to make some changes, too, and they need to get their cost under control as well. So we've talked about, you know, the benefits that could come out of a better schedule, technology improvements to better track overtime, and also frankly, just abusive overtime, which we saw some news about that over the past few months. So from my perspective, I needed to get the budget more realistic. We can't expect to come back here and, and have a revenue surplus every year to bail them out, but I expect them to make some changes. We expect them to make some changes to get closer and to become more efficient. Outside of that, so that's on the Public Safety Agency side, but I'm, I'm really happy to say that we've also made some investments here that are more on the preventive side as well. So you've heard about the ROKA program, that's a million-dollar contribution the city will make. That will serve 75 young adults, young adult males in the first class. Our cost is a million dollars a year. We've also done, the mayor had done some extensive fundraising for that program to start that in fiscal 19. You remember, we had a grant from the Bloomberg Foundation that's funding crime cameras and license plate readers and gunshot detection units. In the operating budget, we have a little less than a million dollars for the operating support of those devices. So the grant paid for the purchase, but to maintain those cameras, those, those, to subscribe to the gunshot detection unit service, we have some cost in the operating budget that's in fiscal 19 to maintain those, those purchases. We're also investing in our crime lab. There are 13 positions that have been added. And the idea here is that we have a lot of evidence that we could be entering into a national database. They call it the National Ballistics Information Network. And more quickly entering that data into the system can allow us to see if we have matches, that can help us develop leads and cases and hopefully more quickly close cases. So we think that's a wise investment. And then finally, on the, on the violence reduction side, VRI, Rapid Response. As you know, there are seven, what we call transformation zones that are getting targeted, Rapid Response Level of Service. Some of that work started in fiscal 18. What we decided was that to maintain that level of service in fiscal 19 in those zones without losing the service that we're providing, of course, to the rest of the city, that we needed to add two crews in DPW, add three inspectors in HCD, and provide 300,000 of additional funding for Wreckin' Parks to have their, the centers that are in those zones stay open later. And you'll hear from agencies in the next two weeks from now and a little bit more detail about what's going on there. From there, a couple other highlights, homeless services, there's been $2 million added for winter sheltering. There is a handful of new positions scattered throughout the budget. This was announced, the mayor's intention, back in the, in the winter. Some of those, there's positions for African-American male engagement, communications, neighborhood, liaisons, and also homeless outreach workers are included in that, that category. CAD support is an investment that the city's making to back up our dispatch system. And the 900,000 that you see here as a recurring cost is we're going to have around-the-clock technical support of those systems. So somebody on-call around the clock every hour of the day. It's three positions, I'm sorry, it's nine positions total, or coverage for three shifts per day to keep those up and running. There was a, a little snafu where the system went down and there was an issue technically, so they want to make sure that we have the support there so that doesn't happen again. And that investment will help with that. And then finally, on new initiatives, the mayor's scholar program. So there's $500,000 budgeted. The, the goal was to get 250 additional students coming out of high school per year that we would pay the last dollar to send them to community college. And we're starting to get applications, so we don't know what the actual numbers look like quite yet. But again, the intent there is to cover that last dollar. We did just learn at the end of the state session that the governor actually passed his own, the state legislature and the governor signed his own version of this bill. So we're still not quite sure what that means for our program, if we can send people to the governor's program or ours. So we're still sorting that out since that's new information, but there was 500 allocated for that program. What you don't see here is Safe Streets. So Safe Streets will expand from four sites to 10. That's with a state grant. So everything I'm listing here is a general fund investment, but that's another big win for the city. We'll be going from four sites to 10 with the state grant that was captured by our local delegation. So to offset the cost of these new initiatives, we had to look at the budget and find savings. And fortunately, the big chunk of savings is coming from the healthcare contract rebid, which we talked about. That's the prescription drug rebid and the healthcare consolidation. We are seeing on an annual basis, we will see, we're budgeting for $20 million of savings in the general fund for that, for that action. We also did ask agencies to make, to look for reductions and savings in their budget. We asked agencies to make proposals, the equivalent of 2%. We didn't take all of them, we took some of them. I'm, I'm confident that you won't hear that where there were reductions or there were things that went away in an agency budget, that it won't have a service impact. Either they've become more efficient, or there's a position or something they had in their budget that they're not using for, that is not needed anymore. So the total of all those reductions added up to 1.6 million dollars.
Bob, Bob, can, I didn't hear what you said on, can you go back and repeat the Safe Streets thing again?
Oh, sure. So the investments here on the green, these were all the investments that were made in the, these are the new investments in the general fund. On top of that, we're budgeting $3.6 million in the state fund because we got a grant from the state for that program.
You said three?
3.6.
Million in state money?
In state money, right.
Okay, and that's all you said on that, right?
Yeah.
That was right.
To finish up on, on offsetting the new cost, we are proposing an increase to EMS fees in this budget. Our, our EMS fees are billed to folks that are transported on an ambulance here. Mostly it gets charged to private insurance or Medicare and Medicaid. We don't collect on uninsured for that particular fee, but we haven't changed the rate, we haven't changed the fee levels in nearly a decade. So we're increasing our rate to catch up with inflation and to bring us more in line with what other jurisdictions are charging. We found that even looking at surrounding jurisdictions, we charge less for EMS service than other, you know, in around the Baltimore County than others in the area. So we have some room to grow there. And then finally, on ESTAT, the governor's budget had proposed shifting the cost of the State Department of Assessments and Taxation from 50% to 90% for local jurisdictions. That was, that effort was beaten back, and so that saved us at the very end of the budget planning process, about $2 million. That was something that was, of course, very unpopular with local jurisdictions and our, our lobbying group, Mako, helped to defeat that proposal. Okay? And then finally, we have a series of one-time investments that we're making this year. And first is in capital. So our baseline general fund capital support has, has been for the last few years, 65 million of geo bond, which is borrowed money, and then about $17 million of Pago, which comes from recurring revenues. This year, we were able to add 6.2 million on top of the 17. So the Pago amount this year is nearly 25 million. On the, on the BCPS side, we also added 2 million of capital funds to their allocation. And that decision was made in light of some of the issues that came out in the winter, you know, HVAC in particular. MOED, we allocated $1 million to bridge them through fiscal 19. They lost federal formula funding. The federal formula funding supports two one-stop career centers. We had to backfill $1 million of general funds to get them through this year. We'll be working with MOED to figure out what the plan is for that particular source, those particular centers going forward. We are investing 800,000 in what we're calling Strategic Command Centers or NERV Centers. This is an investment to put better technology in the, not just in the, we already have good technology in the downtown police headquarters, but actually in the districts so we can better gather intelligence and get that information out to the officers on the street. And then finally, the lead program, which is a diversion program for low-level offenders. They got state funding in the fiscal, from fiscal 20 through 23, but we're bridging them for fiscal 19 to keep the program at the same level. That's an investment of a little under $400,000. On the, on the grant side of the budget, so that's the general fund. On the grant side of the budget, I'll just highlight a couple things here. Our total grant budget is $120 million in the state fund, 165 in federal funds, and 117 in private grants or special revenue funds. Most of the city's grant funding is in health or human services or housing and MOED. There is other grant funds sprinkled throughout the budget. If you look in the agency detail book that we provided, there's a service-by-service breakdown of what the sources of funds for, for each service, so you'll see grants there. Here, I'm just listing the really big ones. I would call your attention to the state grants we're getting. We've always gotten a little bit over $10 million for the state library, that's the central library. And this year, we're also getting, of course, that $3 million state grant to extend library hours. On the federal side, the first item I'll highlight, $27.7 million overall in the Health Department for a variety of HIV prevention programs. And on special revenue funds or private grants, I would just mention the bottom item, the Bloomberg grant. That was, a portion of that paid for some of those new, that new equipment in fiscal 18. The rest of that will be purchased in the beginning of fiscal 19. The Bloomberg Foundation is also supporting the mayor's innovation team as well. On the utility side, very, very minimal change this year. The budget is virtually flat versus 19. Fiscal 19 does include the third year of a planned rate increase. It's 9.9% on the water utility and it's 9% on the wastewater side. There will be no change in the stormwater fees in fiscal 19. Now, this is the last year of a three-year rate increase that went to the board. DPW is working to, to determine what the rate increases, if any, will be in fiscal 20 and beyond. And I would expect there to be more. The consent decree, of course, is far from over. We have a lot of capital projects still to complete on that, on that side. But we're not sure what that will be, look like in the long term quite yet. Okay? And then to close, I wanted to just give a couple highlights on each of the five pillars. So we organized the budget around the mayor's five pillars, which are education and youth engagement, public safety, accountability and transparency, economic development and jobs, and quality of life. And under each pillar, we have always tracked and published some broad citywide performance measures, things that apply to the entire city. And you see some of those listed there, and those are discussed in more detail in the executive summary budget document. But I also want to mention that in the agency detail book, you'll see service-level performance measures for all of the agencies. And when the agency heads come and their staff come to report at budget hearings, you know, they'll be prepared to answer questions about those particular measures. Those measures have been developed over a long period of time, collaboration between the agencies, between the Budget Office and City Stat. City Stat is now re-energized and is taking the lead on those measures. They're doing a comprehensive review of all of the city's performance measures. So far, they've only gotten through DPW and DOT. Police and Fire review is underway, and then other agencies we won't get to until later. But we have not, we'll publish performance measures for all agencies. I just wanted the council to be aware that some of those are always under review, and we're always trying to fine-tune those to really get to measures that really tell us how well service is, is doing.
Would, would you say that City, City Stat has done a review of the performance measures at DOT and DPW?
They've completed the reviews at DOT and DPW. They're underway on police and fire, they're starting with the big agencies, of course, first. They're underway with police and fire, and then they have a schedule to get to the other ones over the course of this year and into the following year. So there, there, it's, it's a good process, it's a, it's a nice process, it's very collaborative. We're participating. The agency, of course, is represented, and we're trying to come up with measures. Not that we don't have that, for the most part, in a lot of services, but there are some that agencies have said, well, this doesn't really represent what we do, or it's not very effective at telling us how well they're doing. So that's underway. But in the agency detail book, you'll still see all the measures that we have published. And for DOT and DPW, it will be the new measures that were part of that first-round review. So each of the indicators, just wanted to mention, you know, the key investments in each pillar and some of the, some of the, what we're getting for that investment. So in public safety, of course, we mentioned the ROKA and Safe Streets program. And these are the types of measures that you'll see in the agency detailed budget book. So I won't go through all of these, I'll just highlight that one of the measures for crime cameras, which is our new investment, is that we keep those on, up and running at least 95% of the time. And I'd also call your attention to the number of medical transports. We'll have a, we're aiming, Fire Department expects to transport, do 193,000 transports in fiscal 19, which is, which is quite an increase versus previous years. On education and youth, we'll make the $12.4 million contribution into the youth fund. There's level funding for the after-school programming that's in the adjusted budget in 18. And then for city schools, we're contributing, as I mentioned earlier, over $370 million of total support. That includes operating support, includes capital funding, includes capital contributions for the 21st Century Schools program, and it includes direct services for things like school crossing guard, I'm sorry, school nurses and crossing guards. This is part of a, the three-year commitment that the city made, a three-year, $90 million commitment, which is really extraordinary. It's, and it's helping the, the city schools to make up for lost formula aid that, that occurred last year. A couple, again, this is just a flavor of some of the performance measures that you'll see in the book that we'll talk about more. Again, call your attention, third from the bottom, 250 new graduates in the Scholars Program. And below that, 25,000 youth will be served with our after-school programs this year. Quality of life, we talked about the Rapid Response Service and increase in homeless services are the key investments in that pillar. And again, some flavor of the types of things we're funding with those investments. From the bottom, we'll, we'll be recycling 30,000 tons of material and Health Department exchanging 1.9 million needles through the Needle Exchange Program. In economic development and jobs, our investments will get us the things here. We're attracting 26.7 million, million visitors to Baltimore City, and we're generating $215 million of economic impact from special events such as Light City. And then finally, in accountability and transparency, the two key investments, one is, if you recall back in the fall, HABC split from the city housing department. So there is funding in the budget to, to handle that split. We had to invest some more money in rebranding, workspace facilities for HCD to split from HABC, and some new personnel changes. So that is funded in this year's budget. And BCIT is funded for $4 million to start on the Digital Transformation Plan. The final slot, and, and again, just some things that we track in that, in that pillar. Eight, I'd call your attention, 890,000 calls come through our city call center that's managed by Moit. And the bottom item is one from our shop, one of our performance measures. We're planning to engage 3,000 residents in the budget planning process this year through either web traffic or through community events that we've done. with some council members, actually, that have worked really well for us, that have helped the citizens learn more about the budget and give us input into the process before it begins. So, with that, the last slide, we discussed this, we went through this in detail at the last hearing. I can go through these again, or we can pause for questions. This is the last slide. These were the fiscal risks, but we touched on these at the end of the fiscal '18 presentation, same slide. So, I will pause there and wait for questions.
Hey, Bob. I'm looking at page 19, casino revenue. And in your slide, it says it's been decreased by 5.1 million for fiscal '20, '18, and '19.
Right.
In light of us supposedly getting money from MGM that's really doing very well, we're supposed to get proceeds from the table games, and why are we seeing the decrease?
So, the '18 budget was based on an estimate from the state that turned out to be, frankly, was just too optimistic. So, when we built the '18 budget, we were working off the state estimates that said when MGM would open, it would generate additional revenues. And what we found through the third quarter of fiscal '18 is it has not generated as much as that projection. So, the '18 actual is actually closer. What we're really receiving from casino revenues is closer to the '19 budget. So, we adjusted the budget down for '19 to reflect that.
Okay. And I see on page 35, the children and youth fund. That's an additional 12.4 million in that fund. What's the total amount that's in the youth fund right now?
So, the first-year contribution, I think, was 12 point, oh, it was 11.9. So, 11.9 from this year, and this year will be an additional 12.4.
Okay, so.
Yeah, 23.
That'd be like 24 point something million dollars. Okay. That's probably correct. Okay, I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Bob, can we go to slide five? The digital transformation plan. What are we spending, that's the third to the last bullet from the bottom? Yeah, there we go. Third one from the bottom. What are we, what are we proposing to spend this year that's new on that? And do we know what the total cost of funding the plan and implementing is?
The, well, yeah, so the total cost in the '19 budget is $4 million. It's in the capital budget. I don't recall the specific projects. I think it would be a great question for Frank when he comes in here, the specifics. What I remember him explaining was that there's some basic infrastructure needs that have to be taken care of first before we can implement other parts of the plan. So, it's basically, I think, hardware and software, just infrastructure upgrades. But he would have more details about that. There's $4 million total in the capital budget. The cost of the entire plan, we don't know. It's more a strategic vision about what the city should be doing. So, we'll be working with Frank and his team each year to figure out where the right investments are, what the needed investments are, what those will cost, and potentially what they could save us. Because as we invest in technology, that might mean we need less people for certain functions or it makes us more efficient. So, the strategic plan, it puts some ballpark numbers around it, but it was meant to say, "Here's what the city should be doing in IT, and then we're going to have to phase in our investments."
Can BBMR, can you guys make sure that Frank or whomever from BCIT is prepared to discuss just kind of larger total spend?
We have a call with him next week. We'll prepare him for sure.
Thank you. My second question, on page 15, highway, her, highway user revenues. Wasn't there, was there legislation in Annapolis of five-year? Bob, can you explain that to me?
Yeah, so the legislation says that they're making the first step to try to restore that cut that was way back before the recession. The analysis I saw says we could receive up to 11 million, how much?
11.5.
$11 million more beginning in fiscal '20, which is great news for us. And again, '19 is.
And is that a five-year deal only?
Yeah, it goes, it's confirming it's 11.5, but that's five years.
11.5 above what we would normally receive?
That's right.
But not incremental? It's just 11.5 over the normal 20, the normal 21? Okay.
So, that's, that's great news for us. Now, again, if there's any kind of economic trouble, they could always back off on that or change the law. But for now, that's really good. That's really great news for us.
Got it. Council President?
I'm here. On page nine, on page nine, where we see the greatest chunk of our revenue come from property taxes. Have we looked at how we can diversify to not depend so much on property tax revenue? Because, you know, we serious about reducing our property tax to be competitive with the surrounding counties. Have we looked at any other source of revenue that we could go after instead of relying on property tax?
So, that's a good question. We, even though it's 50, almost 50%, the 20 cents by 2020 has reduced the rate as best we, as best we could over this time. In terms of the other sources, income tax, we're already at the state maximum level. We're already at 3.2%, so we can't raise that any higher. The things that we did, that we tried to do to diversify were the, remember the billboard tax from a few years ago and the taxi cab tax were ones that we were trying to raise taxes on folks that might not necessarily live in the city. It's more taxes on visitors. With folks that live in the city, property tax rate is already very high compared to the other jurisdictions. And income tax rate, we're already at the maximum level. So, I agree, I would, I would love us to have a more diverse tax base because we are reliant on property taxes, but this is the situation we're in. I would say that property tax as well, because the properties are only reassessed every three years, it tends to be a lot smoother ride even during a recession. So, that, even though it's a big source, it's much smoother than our other revenue sources.
Have we recouped the money from Uber and Lyft and those organizations yet?
No, not yet.
Because we didn't join in with the state, and they said that we can recoup that money. We just can't go back, but we can recoup the taxes from that, from Uber and Lyft.
Yeah, I'll have to find out what the latest is on that.
Because I asked that question before.
Yeah, we'll follow up on that. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of talk about tacking them onto the taxi cabs. The trouble we've had, we haven't even collected all of our taxi cab taxes, taxi cab tax yet. It's difficult to collect, so we're struggling there. So, but we'll.
I know the state collects all of it from Uber and Lyft, and we just didn't join in on it under the previous administration. So, we are outlined by ourselves, and we should be able to go and get that money from the state.
Yeah, we'll follow up, but we'll give you a status update on that for where that's at.
And while we on that, I know that most of our property is nonprofits. Take up a lot government.
Yeah.
Have we sit down with the state, or we should sit down with the state, to see what we can get added to our disparity grant because of the number of nonprofits, the number of government buildings that really do not pay us taxes, but yet receive our services, police, ambulance, fire, you know, those kind of things? I think if we sit down and have a real conversation, since they think we come down to the state begging all the time.
Right.
If a lot of them stop pimping the city, i.e. as all the federal buildings, we want them here. It's not like we don't want them here. And the state buildings, they should be paying into some kind of payment in lieu of taxes or something, so we can be competitive with the surrounding counties and get our property tax a little lower. So, we're probably going to try to encourage the administration to put together a task force to look at those various things that I just outlined with a couple council members from the budget committee probably being a part of that.
Okay.
So, we'll be looking into that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Snead?
Thank you. So, on page four, in reference to positions, you said there's 162 new positions coming in. I'm just curious, are any of those, page four, are any of those positions for frozen positions currently that are going to be unfrozen that are in this 162, or these are newly created?
So, 100 of them are police positions that are being restored. So, yeah, 100 of those are, we abolished, there was, or they were salary saved in fiscal 2017. There was 225 that were eliminated. 100 of those are coming back. So, that's the biggest chunk. 13, the next, just hitting on the big items, the next, 13 are new positions for the gun, the ballistics evidence unit. Those are brand-new. 20 of those are the positions I mentioned, some mayor's office positions, African-American male engagement, communications, neighborhood outreach, and homeless outreach. There's 20 there. There's also 14 that are in the library, in the general fund. And that's, the city has to, has, is required to match the $3 million grant we're getting from the state for the extended hours. So, we received that in fiscal '18. We're now creating the positions to work on those, in those libraries for the extended hours. There's also a handful of others that are sprinkled throughout other agencies, but those are the big ones.
With the police positions, was this some of the, what the police commissioner wanted, the former police commissioner wanted, was this some of his goals or request to increase the number? Was that under him?
No, no. This is just a restoration of some.
Okay, so that won't change then with the new one? And then my second question is on page 29, when we talk about the command centers. I'm just curious if we have a location for those and how many?
So, it was supposed to start in the eastern and western districts. I know that they have desires to do some of that in the other districts, but the priority was to get the eastern and western up to speed. But I think, please can answer that when they come in for their hearing.
Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we're going to go right back to those 100 police positions because, as you know, this is a sticking point for me in the budget. And I'm glad that the budget director pointed out that the former commissioner did not ask for these positions because, colleagues, we have to be clear, these positions are not going to be filled. This money is going to go to police overtime, and we know that. We know that just last week, when the, when the police department was here, they told us that they have over 100 and some vacancies that they can't fill. We know through the budget director and others that they have salary-saved positions that they can't fill. So, if we know going into this budget that they can't even fill the vacancies that they have, we know that they're not going to hire 100 more. If you can't hire the 130-something vacancies that you have, why on earth will we give you 100 more, knowing that it's simply just going to be used for overtime? This is what this is for. If they want the money for overtime, they should put it in the budget as overtime money and not hide it as positions that we know are not going to be filled because we know there are tons and tons of other things that it could be useful. But more, most importantly for me, Mr. Simeon may have pointed out earlier that City Stat is actually analyzing the police department for its effectiveness. Myself, the council president, Councilman Dorsey, the council president has been saying, at least for the 11 years that I've been working here, know that we operate our police department in an inefficient manner. That's why we fought to have the online reporting system done, a system that today can calculate the amount of man-hours and money saved for each incident that does not actually require police officers to go out to take that report, but for some reason, we refuse to use it. And we should do that first and see, use the situations, use the resources that we have currently efficiently first before we ask for more. If we were utilizing the 2,600 offices that we have today in an efficient manner that did not have them answering calls for service that they do not need to respond to, we would not need to be requesting 100, 100 more or $9 million in overtime for them to go out and do the same exact thing, and that's answered reports. Our police officers do not have the opportunity to patrol. They are call-takers. We might as well call them 911 call-takers. They do not have the opportunity to patrol. And a lot of that is because we lack the leadership to say, "Listen, citizens of Baltimore, it's a new day. We don't have 3,500 cops. We're never going to have 3,500 cops again." Actually, it'd be quite hard for us to justify that with our population decline. We're going to use our resources more sufficiently and efficiently, and we cannot continue to just allow the overtime budget to grow. We have to push the line somewhere. My second comment to that, to that point, is that in your state, state grant funding, well, first of all, Mr. Simeon, will those 100 positions, will that be used for actually hiring? Or do you believe that eventually it's going to end up as overtime?
So, to answer that question, I think we acknowledge that they are nowhere close to being able to fill those positions, so we want to acknowledge that. In many agencies, in many agencies, we fund positions, and vacancies offsets overtime spending. In police, it just happens to be on such a large basis that it's tens of millions of dollars. So, our intent is to, we want to have the police department fully staffed. And so, we didn't want to add overtime money to the budget to assume that overtime is okay. We wanted to say, "Hey, if you fill these positions, this is where the money would go." But yes, in the short term, every single year, some of the savings from vacant positions is going towards overtime. So, just want to make sure that's clear. To your, to your second point, I strongly agree with you about the reporting unit and some of the efficiencies, and I encourage you to ask those questions to the department. I mean, what we've said, what I'll say over and over again is that we've got to get a better schedule, we've got to reduce the abuse. And the overtime audit that is underway, I mean, hopefully, it is scaring some officers that we're abusing that into getting that under control. And then the technology, there's just no reason why we shouldn't be better able to track that. Or, like you said, divert, you know, people, you know, have officers actually taking real calls and for the lower-level ones, having them, you know, handled through telephone. So, I agree with all those, but you're right, it's up to the department to put those into place.
And thank you. For my colleagues, I just want to note for the record that he agrees with what I said. The second question is about the 3.3 for community police officers. So, as you know, this is always a hot-button topic for me. And actually, there was legislation in Annapolis around this specific topic because for years, they have given us money for community police officers. And essentially, what ends up happening, because there was no tracking mechanism, it ends up going to regular patrol officers. What do we, what are you expecting to happen? I'm going to ask the commissioner himself, too, with the law that's going to be going into place at the beginning of the year.
So, that's a good question. There's, that's just one of, they get three big state grants. There's the, there's the community policing, the foot patrol, and some kind of violence reduction.
Yep.
But it's all, it's all basically used in some way for patrol officers. I don't know the specifics of those individual grants, so we can follow up and we can find out about that.
And then my last thing, first of all, my colleagues, and this is why I think that it's important because when, when the citizens see 100 police officer positions and they see that tied to violence reduction, they're going to think that we're actually going to be hiring 100 more people to go out to try to make them safer. We, folks that know better and understand, they say, "When you know better, you do better." At least, that's what they say in Park Heights. You have to do better. We know that that's not the case. We know that that's not going to happen. We know that as long as we have the schedule that we have, we know that this is going to be used for overtime. And we also know that because our patrol officers are not afforded the opportunity to patrol, that their ability to impact the crimes that the citizens complain about in the first place is extremely limited.
Council President Young?
Thank you. To Councilman Scott's point about the 100 positions, they could fill them, Councilman Scott, if they really wanted to. But you know, as well as I know, that officers were trying to come back to the police force, and they refused to hire those police officers. You know, in personnel, there were stacks of applicants that no one did anything with because of the politics they play within the agency. They can really hire 100 more officers if they chose to. And I'm telling you what I know, okay? They plan shuffle in the deck with applicants that they don't want, who have no issues in their background, when they're at. One officer, you know, he's the top officer for the governor of Florida, White House clearance. But yet, they say he failed to polygraph. Those are the kind of political games that they play over there. Then they talk about people having, you know, background. And if you look at any of our officers, everybody has something in their jacket. I can call and complain about you. If you're an officer, and you get something in your jacket, you know. So, those kind of political games that they play over there, instead of really trying to beef up this department so that we can have an adequate amount of officers in our district instead of one district having 13 officers, one having 11, 10, and 9, and we don't have the coverage throughout the city. And I think it's all a ploy to get overtime. And I think we should force them to do the hiring of these folk that have no issues in their background. I mean, I know many a people we've sent over there, no, no drugs, no nothing. College, good family, but yet, these guys can't get in, and young ladies. So, they can hire the 100 if they really want to.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you go into any, the analysis done on the? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you go into any, the analysis done on the EMS fee increase? And let me preface my concern that, you know, we've seen on a national level, changes to healthcare, increases in healthcare costs, increases in healthcare premiums. And I understand that this is built to the provider, but has there been any analysis done on the potential impact that this could have on low-income families and their ability to afford insurance? And my concern is also tied to an increased reliance on the on-demand service to get people to the hospital. We're seeing more and more that people will call an Uber and a Lyft to get to emergency care instead of calling an ambulance, because they're concerned about the cost of transport, which puts them in a much more troubling position if they do actually have an emergency situation. The Uber driver is not gonna be able to provide medical care. So I'm a little bit nervous about that, and can you talk a little bit more about what was done and what considerations were made for that increase? I mean, I understand surrounding jurisdictions, but ours is low because we have a high concentration of low-income families that live in Baltimore.
Sure, sure. So we did do, we worked with the fire department and their billing vendor, the person who handles the billing for us, to do an extensive analysis of how we compare with other jurisdictions, and also what effect that would have on the rates. We found, in that analysis, we found that we could bump up the rates on those, on the private insurance and Medicare Medicaid, that we weren't even, we weren't even recovering up to the cap that we were allowed to for those sources. So we were cautious about just, you know, lifting the rate up to a point that it would make a change in those, in those rates. For the, for the low income in particular, for the uninsured in particular, we don't collect on uninsured for EMS.
I know.
So that won't be an issue for this particular policy. And we feel like the rate increase is just catching up with inflation, so that it should be able to be borne by those insurance providers, including Medicare and Medicaid, which is federal government, that we were, that we needed to max out the benefit we got from those sources.
And they indicated that this would not result in substantial rate increases for families in Baltimore City?
No, based on our analysis, we don't believe it will.
Okay. Is that information that can be shared with the committee?
We can share, we can share, we can share a summary of that information, of course. And we can share, and actually, I should say, we're, our rates are still, even at this point, are lower than a lot of other large jurisdictions in that analysis. So we, we had recommended even potentially, we might have the potential in future years to push it even further along. We're way behind, frankly. Just to get it up to parity with the surrounding jurisdictions was, in our mind, a no-brainer. We could be even higher. And again, this is money that's being born collectively by insurance companies. It's better than having a tax increase for our, for our citizens.
I just think it's something we should look at further. We hear a lot about the wealth of surrounding jurisdictions when it comes to raising the minimum wage and other things, and this seems like now that we're, we're saying, okay, well, we should be on par with other jurisdictions, when we've acknowledged, the finance department, the mayor's office, and others have acknowledged that there are income disparities that are different in Baltimore City compared to an Ananor or Baltimore County. So I don't know if that's the best metric to compare ourselves to and to try and to aspire for when we know the challenges that people have in Baltimore City. The second question I had was around property tax assessments. You mentioned that there was now more investigative work being done, and I'm glad to hear that, because one of the things that has been brought to my attention is a very systemic practice of residential property owners, every single opportunity challenging their property tax assessment. And many of these folks own several properties throughout the city, and what you're seeing is, especially along the waterfront areas like Westport, Cherry Hill, all the areas across the, you know, the peninsula and near Port Covington, you're seeing these tremendous drop. It was in, even in the budget, the preliminary budget distributed to the council, that there are particular corridors that this is a very serious practice. And even talking to some folks who work in this field, we're seeing that the same players are coming over and over again to request reductions, which has a very big impact on our property tax revenue, but also it depresses property tax values in neighborhoods that are predominantly people of color, that, you know, when we talk about building wealth and building equity, these systemic practices are problematic. What type of investigations are you doing, and how can we really look further into this issue? Because it's very problematic.
Sure. So I can give you a summary of what we do. When finance comes in for their hearing, there is a unit within the department that focuses on, it's called the Billing Integrity Unit, and they do the, or they run, that run the appeals. I can tell you in a nutshell what we do. We've always appealed commercial properties, and frankly, it's because we get a bigger bang for the buck. We have these, you know, huge commercial properties that could cost millions of dollars, and if we see a big discrepancy between properties, between the assessed value and the, and the sales value, if something turned in the last few years, we go right after that. On residential, frankly, we haven't done it before because we haven't had the staff, and because we didn't get a big bang for the buck, because the properties are so much smaller. And there is, to my understanding, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into appealing, if the city is to appeal something, you have to visit the property, you have to look at comparables, you have to gather your case and go in front of a board that you appeal the, the assessment. I can say that because of what we saw this year, there's certainly a lot more interest in us doing that on a more systemic basis than we have. If, you know, we've, I think I've shared this with folks before on the council, that if you see properties that you think are out of line, we, you know, our unit, it's not our unit in our shop, but it's within finance, would definitely welcome that information. We're trying to figure out the best way to systemically go back that, to use our resources the best of our ability to attack that, that problem. That's what I know in a summary level. When, I would definitely be here for the finance hearing, there's a unit called Billing Integrity. They could probably give you a little bit more detail about what they do.
I'll be sure to raise it, because some of the concerns that have been raised, again, that there are property owners that own large numbers of properties that are systemically going every year, I think it's every, every two or three years they can come, every single chance they get, they're saying, my property isn't worth the value that you're assessing it.
Right.
And they're doing it for every single one of their properties. The other piece that was raised, and I know this is not for Baltimore City Finance, but there's a lot of questions that have been raised about the fact that the, the board that oversees these assessments, I don't believe any of them actually live in Baltimore City, which is a problem when you, you know, you're sitting in a boardroom and you're listening to property owners say, you know, my neighborhood is going down, but if you don't live in the city and you don't work in the city or really know much about these communities, how can you really take that person's request to lower their property value in a systemic way very seriously or with any real knowledge about what's actually happening and the impact that that has on the city of Baltimore? But again, it's a bigger, bigger issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Councilwoman Clark, you next?
Oh, can I?
Yes, your turn.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I have a, I just wanted to follow up on the, if I could, I already headed down to the fire, the EMS fees. I just, let me just say this, and you're not the fire chief or the finance director, so I'll raise it, but the fact is, yes, I was around when we adopted charging a fee for EMS medic services. It was years and years ago, and one of the things we were very certain to establish was that this is really about insurance companies. And just as you point out, go to the cap of what the services will bring from the normal insurers that our population are associated with. And that should include Medicare, Medicaid.
Yep, it does.
And so that was how it was adopted. And maybe that legally is how it is, but I know that people get harangued and harassed for the fees if they, if they don't have the coverage that they're expected to have. These are usually older people. They get scared, and it may be in some book that they cannot be forced to pay, but then they don't call. Now, I know there are people who call every day, and they think it's a taxi service and all that. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about regular people who get their, they try to reach their son at work or something to take them to a hospital because they're afraid of the cost of these ambulances. So when the fire department and the EMS come in themselves, I wanna understand why they, they harass people to pay even though they know the law, I presume, still prohibits them forcing anyone to pay except their insurance. Now, do you have anything to shed on that?
Yeah, I think, I think fire can speak to that, but I know that they do, they do bill, but they, they don't collect, so.
I know that, yeah.
Yeah, I know, you gotta notice.
They bill, but they don't collect. You can check out, but you may not leave. So basically, if I'm an eighty-eight-year-old lady and I have a medical emergency, yeah, maybe I don't have any cur, I will have some kind of coverage, maybe Medicaid, but it might not cover what the bill is, okay? I'm not gonna twice in a row call if I'm getting billed and billed, because now I'm, I'm an older lady, I'm getting a bill, I'm supposed to pay my bills, I can't pay my bills, and so I'm gonna call my, my grandson to come and pick me up and take me someplace to the hospital. And that's, it's the billing and harassing around the billing, which goes to, I believe, a private company to follow up on. It is not, it is just what you say. They bill, they don't collect, but in that process, they're, they're really putting people at risk who then don't call.
Okay. Yeah, I think they can speak to that. I know.
Well, I hope so, because otherwise, we need to change what the law says.
Right.
As a council. A couple other things that have on my list, none of them's long. Secondly, about this hundred sixty-whatever positions, and that they're for the police department, but we already have a hundred unfilled positions and et cetera. I just wanna make one point. For the last year or two, what the police department has said to us, or what I heard, was what we really need to do to put more police on the street is to fill some of the administrative jobs at the police department with civilians, and to send the police, the uniformed people, out on the streets. Now, now I see a hundred positions that I agree are really for a place to put overtime money, tuck it away, and I don't hear any discussion of change, of that turnaround, because the big issue is, where's the year in which we can afford to double pay? In other words, you've got uniformed officers sitting at desks doing civilian jobs. Now, to replace them, you've got to then bring in, to be trained and prepared, civilians to do those jobs.
Right.
Before they can then leave them and go out and be police officers on the street. Is this, is this that?
It's, it's not, but I still think that what you described can happen. If there's a police officer occupying a, a position that's supposed to be for civilian, we can classify that position so that it's a civilian class and hire for that person and then move that person.
Well, can we use this money to do that? So at least we get some benefit from it, that we bring in a civilian at less pay, and there's an overlap for a while, and then the police officer, if he doesn't retire because he can't face going back out, you know, walking, if, I mean, you would need that double, that's what's always stopped it, according to the police department.
I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, if there are, there are vacancies, there are vacant police positions now, if, if a police officer is occupying a budget position, for example, they can take that person, move them to the patrol, and then there's a vacancy here that they can hire somebody who's more apt to do budgeting.
Well, they should do it.
Or administration, or human resource, whatever it might be.
Okay, so there's flexibility built into this budget, because we know, I mean, I think we all agree that it's not gonna hire officers that we can't hire.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. I think we, we have a limited number of police officers. We should be using them to do police officers.
And so maybe we should, when they come in, talk to the, whoever's left, when they come in, talk to them about doing these switcheroo's now and hiring these civilians, and we got all this money that's gonna just go to overtime, and maybe it would reduce overtime.
Right, right.
Okay, just two quickies. I saw, I don't know what page it's on, but point five, in other words, half a million dollars going into the mayor's scholars program. It's back, it's point five, okay? So I thought the mayor's scholars program at Baltimore City Community College, BCCC, was one-point-five million dollars, and it's, it's last dollar in money, so you get all your, the benefits you're entitled to, and then whatever the gap is, it fills. And now it's, it's, it's not one-point-five, it seems to be point five. Why?
Because we, we did much further analysis on that, so when the idea was out there at first, that was very early stages of the program when they were.
It was announced.
Yeah, I know, and we did, we went back before we locked down the budget, and we actually worked with BCCC to look at the, the type of student that would apply for this program.
Right.
And what we found was that many of them are already covered by financial aid.
Sure, but we knew that all the time. I thought you were, that what I thought was important about it was, I mean, we always knew it was last dollar in, and, and there were, because a lot of young people who would pretty well be covered almost entirely. So...
That estimate, that estimate came from BCCC, and we afterwards sat down and said, we need to go through this in more detail.
I'm not surprised to hear it, but since we have a million dollars.
Well, there's, there's not a million. That's just, that was never in the budget. The budget always had a half million.
Okay, well, I've got a, I've got a college-bound program I'm interested in. It's really needed for real people that really need the money, so, but that's not your job. And finally, you mentioned that the, that the city's rebid in a favorable manner the prescription contract, and it's not express script anymore, it's a new vendor, and that in itself, in this marketplace, has reduced costs. Question, we are working our way toward, we have a commitment from the city of Baltimore that they will not, as predicted originally, cut off the prescription program from Baltimore City sponsorship.
Right.
Right. And we know that we will be working our way toward a contract that will be different from what we have now. In other words, it wasn't that everything's gonna stay exactly like it is today, it was, it will be a city program. We will continue sponsoring a city, yeah, program. But in the course of rebidding, have you radically changed the current policy? Because we were supposed to be involved in, the retirees especially, involved in at least being part of the discussions of the new sponsored program in 2020.
Right, and that's, that's still under discussion. You're right in that the city will sponsor a plan. It's a matter of what type of plan we sponsor is the discussion. So we, those discussions will happen over the next few months. You know, in all the work to get the budget together, we haven't looked at it in the past few months.
But I'm glad, because we would like to have the retirees and the labor people involved in at least hearing about it before it gets announced.
Right.
Like the last time when it was announced and they freaked out.
Right.
Thanks, I'm done.
Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you. So on the recrutation and transfer taxes on page seventeen, like you mentioned, there's a major fluctuation of what that amount is, and you show a healthy increase for this year. I'm just curious, as far as the pending legislation we have that would be increasing the recrutation and transfer tax, how would that play into your projected totals and revenues for future years?
So that's, that's a great question. So we are, we haven't finished our response to the bills, the bill that's out there. We are looking at it. The research we're doing now is we are trying to figure out if, and I say if, because we're not sure, we're looking at the research, if a increase, if it has a dampening effect on the market. I mean, logic would say, yeah, if you raise a tax, you might have less activity. So I think that if there is an increase that ultimately passes, that could have some kind of dampening effect on the general fund side of things. What that will be, I'm not prepared to say yet. We are, we are researching that as part of our bill response.
Gotcha. And do you have a total amount in which we issue in tax? Gotcha. And do you have a total amount in which we issue in tax credits across the board on everything? I know the numbers were very handy on, it's like the ESTAD and some of the other stuff, but I wasn't sure, like, as far as some of the development tax credits and individual spot tax credits that are offered, just what the umbrella total would be.
Yeah, there's a, there's a chart, I don't know if you have it in front of you, I can share this with you afterwards.
No, you have just the total number, or?
So the total cost of tax credits is, in fiscal eighteen, is a hundred and four million dollars. And there's a breakdown of all the ones here. I can, I can.
And does that, does that include specific projects that we offer, you know, TIFs or other types of incentives on?
This is, this is, this is tax credits. This isn't lost revenue from, yeah, this is just, just specific tax.
Do you have, is it also in there what that amount is?
I don't have it here, but we could, we could send that to you.
Right, yeah, so that's something that I'd be interested in knowing, because obviously, when we issue those types of things, our expenses will increase based on new people coming into us, living in a specific project and occupying that space, but, you know, so our, our expenses are going up, but the revenue is not, not going up accordingly. And so do you know of the, because you were saying that the commercial side of things, of the major development projects that have come online this year, do we know roughly how many of them were getting some type of a tax credit or TIF versus ones that just went ahead and were private-funded completely all the way through?
Are you referring to the assessment increase on commercial and?
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand, as far as, you know, the new projects that are coming online this, this past year, which obviously helps our, our revenues on the, on the taxes, on tax side of things come up, how many of those projects were done, brand-new projects? I'm not existing buildings and existing structures, but of the new projects, how many of those were done completely privately versus ones that had some type of benefit from the city?
I see. We have a list of every, all of our tax credits by property and amount and when it came online. I'll have to see if we can compare that versus everything, ones that aren't getting tax credits versus ones that are, but we can, we can look at that, we'll send you some.
So your list would have all the projects that came online?
I don't think so. I think we have a list of all the projects that got a credit.
Got a credit.
I'm not sure if we can, we might be able to somehow get an estimate of which ones came on and that did not get a credit. We can look at that for you and follow up.
Gotcha.
I know we have the former, I'm just not sure about the latter.
Okay, thank you. And then one last quick thing. So you mentioned, and it seems like a pretty crazy number, a hundred ninety-three thousand transports, seems like a lot.
Yeah.
Do we know what the city's cost per service is on that after we're paid by the insurance companies? Like, how much we're losing on each one of those transports?
So I don't know offhand, but I can, we can share that with you. There's, you know, the EMS fee is only offsetting a portion of the cost of the service, so we could.
So you're saying we're running at a loss, even if we got paid?
Oh, right, yeah, we're running at a loss. The general fund is largely supporting that service, so the, the transport fee is just partially paying for that service. So we can, we can.
So you'll get us what the transport fee is and then how much we're losing in total from that?
Right.
So we can figure out the cost per transport?
Yep, we can, we can send that.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listening to my colleagues and looking at the overview list on page five, I'm really thinking you need to add economic development or revitalization under, as one of the checkpoints under, you know, your list of violence reduction initiatives. And I guess I kind of come to that conclusion as well, it's still in my mind, from a hearing we had this morning in taxation, finance, and economic development, and we had a long conversation on the food deserts and supermarkets. I listened to Councilman Burnett, and he was talking about revitalization and housing. I mean, right now in this city, we're doing so many, we have so many projects that involve general, you know, our funding, and it's, I think it's good to see that also written that we're doing economic development thing. Everything listed here is a type of economic, some way it's connected. I think those words should be listed as well to prove that, you know, funds are going towards good uses that people and our taxpayers can see. And things are starting to pop up in that way. The mayor is, you know, cracking down on these corner so-called convenience stores. You know, she's into health and all these other healthy initiatives. We need to have a, I think we need to have a check of economic development revitalization. It just kind of helps, explains, you know, when the average person looks at the, this, they, and they see that, they're gonna think, okay, I can see where some of our money is going. I see that she, you know, took away or improved a convenience store. In public safety, we, I had put in a bill on dangerous knives, and again, those are in impoverished areas, and, you know, hopefully that's something that's gonna help with that. All that focuses back on economic development and making changes toward violence reduction initiatives. So please consider adding that.
Thanks, sure.
And it's kind of a trend that is also going on around the country as well, and putting that in their products that they present to council members.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You talked about ROKA for a second. What's, what's the breakdown, public versus private, in over how many years?
So it's a four-year program. It's a four-year program. The total cost over the four years is supposed to be sixteen million, and ten is supposed to be from outside sources, and a total of six from the city over that four years. So the first, what happens is, the first year you have a class of, of people that join the program. Again, it's, I think it's, it's males targeted, seventeen to twenty-four years old, and then you start with seventy-five, then you layer on another seventy-five and another, so it does grow each year. So our commitment in the first year is a million, it will grow a bit in fiscal twenty and beyond, and the outside funding is supposed to be helping to supplement that, that program. So, yeah, the best estimate we have now is sixteen million total over four years, but ten of that is, ten of that is outside sources.
Can you go back to slide twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Forgive me if you already answered this. There was two million dollars in there for new positions. What was that for?
Right, so those are the positions, there's, some of them are in the mayor's office. It's African-American male engagement, communications, neighborhood liaisons, homeless outreach workers, and then there's a handful sprinkled in MOED for youth works and MOHS as well. So that's, that's the big chunk of them.
Can we get a, you provide the committee with a list of those positions with salaries, please?
Sure, yeah. Actually, there's an exhibit in the agency detail. We'll, we'll get that to you, yeah.
If you could just send.
We'll send you that.
Page that's on, that's perfect. No need to recreate the wheel. Also on page twenty-seven, save streets. So we got three, we got three point six million from the state. Last year, we.
There's one point five.
One point seven, I thought.
Yeah, it was about one point, there was one point, yeah, there was one point five in the, there was already two hundred K, there was one point five that was added in the general fund in the eighteen adjusted budget, so that still remains. The three point six will supplement that. That's the, the three point six is new money that will allow us to expand from four to ten.
The city's contribution is staying the same?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And that, that's covering, there's four sites now, so that's what that funding is covering.
So the three point six will cover the six new sites?
The new ones.
Colleagues, any other questions?
Yep.
Schleifer?
Yeah, so in arrangements that we have, and other council president brought up about some of the nonprofits that are off the rolls, and we have a lot of hospitals, there is an agreement that's a payment in lieu of taxes.
That's right.
So where does that money go?
It's general fund revenue.
So that money's going to, and so that's also in the book?
Yeah, it's in, it's actually, if you go in the, these yellow pages in the exact sum, there's actually a list of all of the revenue sources, and there's a line called nonprofit pilot agreement.
Okay. And so do we, do we have all of them in there, or it's just the ones that opted in as part of that original agreement?
It's the ones that are part of that agreement. Total, I think, is six million dollars each year, per year.
All right, so is there an opportunity to then reach out to some of the other people in the market?
That, I'm not sure. We can, we can ask. That, that agreement, I believe, is signed for ten years. Right, so the twenty-five nonprofits, including hospitals and large educational institutions, are in there. So it's really the big ones are in there.
Right. And so, I mean, is that something that's being discussed as the opportunity of looking at some of the other ones as well? Because twenty-five of them, I know, I know a handful of them that are part of that agreement. Obviously, that six million dollars is pennies compared to.
Yeah.
Services that we're providing towards that.
It, it has not come up recently, just because that agreement is so fresh, but I think it, it will. You know, we were part of those negotiations. We were hoping to get, frankly, a better deal in that particular negotiation, but that's what we're, we're with.
So what year are we in right now, in that ten-year?
Let's say the third, maybe? What year are we, is it the second year? Second, yeah, fiscal nineteen will be the third. We're in the second, going into the third, and it's a ten-year.
So we're, we're binded to stick in that agreement instead of renegotiating a new one?
We could try to renegotiate a new one, but the agreement that we have is a ten-year agreement.
And one last thing. You mentioned about the low property assessments.
Yes.
In Baltimore. So what, what would you attribute that to, like, in Baltimore City versus other jurisdictions?
You know, I, we, we're not sure. To be brutally honest with you, I, we looked at the data, not sure why we, why we saw that, that level. It's gonna take a little bit of a deeper analysis on, on our front to see what that was. We identified ones that we thought, we identified the properties, the residential properties, where we thought that there could have been, not necessarily it could have been an error, just something that looked way out of, out of line, and those are the ones that we appealed. But across the board, we saw a lot of decline, so I, I don't know why, I mean, the activity in the market has been fine over the last few years, so I don't, I can't, I can't.
I was just asking you to verify this thing. I mean, I've been doing my own independent research as far as it comes to property taxes and all things related to that, and it appears that sometime in the recent past, so past five, ten years or so, there's been a change in the process in which the state has been assessing the properties in Baltimore City versus what they've been doing in other jurisdictions, a lot of other jurisdictions, like the county, had a lot more new development, which is obviously an easier thing to assess.
Yeah.
Rather than coming around in a, in a place like Baltimore City, which is older, and adequately assessing those, those locations. So I would encourage you guys to take a look and speak to them and to see what they've done differently over the past ten years versus how they've previously gone around and assessed. And I think what you're gonna find is there's probably not so much boots-on-the-ground assessment. It's gonna be a lot more transactional-based, as well as a lot more just straight-up Google Maps. And that doesn't necessarily give you the full picture of what's going on out there.
Right. Yeah, definitely, the, the finance hearing, which I mentioned earlier, there's a unit that works closely with the appeals process, so that would be, they might have some more just understanding of how that, how that works, or if they've noticed any changes over the last few years.
Right, especially in the neighborhoods that have new developments popping up, that the value of those communities have skyrocketed. I assure you that those assessments are not at the current market value.
Right.
The city stat review that you mentioned. That's done at DOT and DPW in process for fire and police. Is that the Office of, that's Kendra's shot?
Yeah, yeah, it's the Office of, Mayor's Office of Sustainable Solutions. It's part of that office.
So this is the, this is the first I'm hearing of that. What is, can you tell me what's been done for DOT and DPW?
Yeah, so basically what they've done is, they've gone back to the existing performance measures, the one that we've shared each year, and we've made.
The ones that are in the budget book?
The ones that are in the budget book, right. And those were, you know, those were developed in conjunction with us, with the agencies, with, with city stat, you know, over the course of many years. The new team has come in and said, we want to take a fresh look and go back and look at those. And so what they're doing is, they're sitting down with the agency, they're going through the measures. A lot of them are saying, yep, this works, we have good data, it makes sense, it speaks to the, the particular service and gives us good information. Others that either we're not happy with, or city stat's not happy with, or the agency, frankly, is not happy with and doesn't think it speaks to their work, those are being reviewed and discussed, and in some cases, we're replacing those measures with, we think are better measures. And so the review process for DOT and DPW, they actually signed a, kind of like an informal agreement between them and city stat and us, and say, we agree with these are the measures we're going to be tracked by. And then that process, city stat meetings will start up again for those agencies and do the normal review, either bi-weekly or monthly, to see how they're doing. And then we'll publish them annually in our, in our book. Those are the only two that are done completely, so it's gonna take in a while.
So are the ones that are in the FY nineteen budget, are those, are those the new ones for DOT and DPW?
DOT and DPW, yeah, the ones that are in there are reflective of that review.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The others, the others are old measures. Just because they're measures that we use doesn't mean we're gonna throw all those out.
Right, right.
Most of them are, most of them are fine.
They just haven't gone through the review this year.
Exactly.
Okay. So what does that review entail? I mean, what?
So it's, it's just an open discussion. What is, you know, talking about the service and what's the best way to measure how well that service is working? So it's just a lot of back-and-forth conversation about, you know, what is it that your office does? What is it that you're trying to achieve and trying to pick good measures? It's a little bit, frankly, it's a little bit more of an art than a science, so it's just basically a joint discussion between our office, city stat, and the agencies to figure out, what do you do? What is it that you produce? And what are, what are you trying to achieve with the money that you get? So, simple as that.
What's the average cost of deployment for a red light or a speed camera? Do you know that?
Average cost of?
Deployment. Like, what does it cost to, if we determine a new location, like, we're gonna put a speed camera by that exit sign?
Yeah.
What does it cost us to?
So the, the total cost of the program in nineteen is about eight million dollars. That's contractor costs that we pay for the locations and the, and the staffing to overview.
You have like a subscription fee we pay the contractor?
Yeah, on a per-camera basis. We can figure out what it is per, I don't have that in front of me, but we can send you that, what it is to start a brand-new one.
Council President Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to nonprofits, okay? And like I said, they do very good work for us in the city of Baltimore, and I think that their services are greatly needed. But when you look at hospitals, what is the definition for them in terms of patient care directly, you know, I mean, patient care, yeah, if it's dealing directly with the patient, we don't want to bother that. But what about all these other little properties they have, like their garages, their car washes, where they locate their equipment? That has nothing actually to do with the hospital itself, other than parking stuff. Have we looked at the criteria of what constitute them getting tax abatement on those kind of properties?
So that's a good question. I know we, we, there were, I know there was one in the, on the parking realm that we, there was a unit that we tried, that, you know, they're using parking as kind of a profit entity as part of a larger, a larger building or development, and I think we did try to go after that. I'll have to follow up with our revenue collections folks.
Not only that, like, inside these hospitals, they have like.
Cafeteria.
Pizza places and, and all kinds of other businesses. Are we taxing that square footage within there?
No, I think it's the entity.
We need to really take a hard look at those kind of things that has nothing to do with the mission of that nonprofit.
Right.
You know, so anything outside of the hospital or their clinics, you know, urgent care, places like that, I think we need to look at that real closely. And I know that I said, we want to put together a task force to look at that, maybe have the chair of the budget committee and the chair of the taxation committee on that task force, along with appointees by the mayor, and try to really look at that, get some real citizens, some nonprofits at the table, too. Because if we're serious about reducing our property tax, we have to look at all of this, you know, these properties that we can't generate any taxes off of.
Right.
That's just a comment. Like I said, I fully support our nonprofit community. I think they do a great job, but everything can't be nonprofit.
Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Director, you may know the answer to this question, or one of them, I know you know the answer. Mr. Director, you may know the answer to this question, or one of them, I know you know the answer to, but the other may be reserved for planning. As you know, looking through a lens of equity is critically important to me, especially for our capital plan. Do you know, we know the planner is putting into place a equity scoring thing for their capital plan based off the study that they put out? Do you know that if this six-hundred-and-eighty million that they have went through that actual, went through that?
Yeah, so I thought it, I thought it did in this year's process, but I think Tom Stosser and Sarah would be
Well.
they managed, we weren't, we were, we participate in the process but not managing the process, they'd be able to better speak to that.
Okay, and just for a follow-up, for the operating, the two-point-eight, we don't do that at all as of yet, right?
So we haven't, we haven't done that yet. It's something we've been looking at, I mean, we, we saw the results of the, you know, the planning, the lens that they're looking through. So it's something that we're considering as we make decisions. More to follow soon on that, but it is something we've looked at.
We'll take care of it.
We didn't use that lens specifically for this year.
We'll take care of it for you in a few weeks, thank you.
Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to just quickly double back around to this performance measure conversation. I was a little bit bothered by the statement, it's more of an art than a science. I mean, we have a lot of revenue going to many of these agencies, and a lot of really smart people in this town that can help develop actual performance measures that aren't just based on sort of a conversation, but really, it should be rooted in science, rooted in best practice and how agencies operate nationally. You know, we can even, speaking of nonprofits, Baltimore Neighborhood Indicators Alliance, I'm sure would help. We have Hopkins, I mean, we have a lot of institutions here that could develop real measures. I mean, as I go through the budget book, I am usually pretty, and I didn't want to go line-by-line here, we have plenty of time to go through that with the agencies, but some of the, the ones that I've seen are pretty lackluster as far as what we're actually measuring and how we define success. And it should be something that we, you know, measure employee performance by as well. Because if you're constantly setting the bar low, then yeah, you're going to meet your goal. But, you know, I don't think that's the mandate that the taxpayers of the city have put forth when, you know, when they pay their income tax, their property tax, or their taxes annually, I think they want to know that we are really being scientific in how we review measures and being very intentional about building on success and operating more efficiently. So I think that's a missed opportunity that we've made, and I brought this up last year in the same budget hearings, that there should be more time spent developing measures of success that we build on and hold people accountable to.
Yeah, I just comment, I agree with your statement when I say it's an art rather than a science. What I mean is being in those conversations, there tends to be a lot of disagreement at first, and usually, over some discussion, you get to a point where you say, oh yeah, these are the things that we should be measuring. You know, the mayor's office of sustainable solutions, they'll be here for a hearing, you can ask a little bit more about what they go through. I know our staff, when we develop training, we have, we have training about what's a good measure, what's not an effective measure, city stat does as well. So we have some background, it's an interesting idea to get some of those other outside eyeballs on it, that might be a good suggestion, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions for BBMR? Okay, we're in recess on this bill until May twenty-ninth at nine AM.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Sennemy.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, you're up next, sir. Colleagues, right now it's three fifty-four PM. We need, we have taxpayer night starting at five. John, if you could, if you could try and keep your presentation as quick as possible and also hit on the charter school issue, depending on how many folks are here tonight to deal with that. We, gotcha, gotcha. Depending on how many folks are here tonight, we might ask you to go into that a little bit more. But I suspect that the majority of the council's questions now are going to deal with the charter issue, is that right? Or?
Yes.
That's right.
I mean
Burnett?
Pinkett? Schiffer? Right, but, but I, I think what I'm saying is, yeah, take it away. We'll tell you to stop if we're bored and want you to go somewhere else.
Okay. Good afternoon again, I'm John Walker, Chief Financial Officer for Baltimore City Schools. And with me are Allison Perkins Cohen, who is the Chief of Staff for City Schools, along with Jim Brennan, who is a member of her staff, and Mary Ann Cox, who is the Deputy Chief Financial Officer. And I will try to get through quick because I know you have questions. If we just look back at fiscal year eighteen, a year ago, if you all recall, we were in here in a very different situation. We were dealing with a potential one-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar budget gap, a potential of a thousand layoffs, and things were looking pretty bleak. With the advocacy from the community and, and the help from both the state and the city, we were able to come up with a bridge to Kerwin, which provides approximately sixty million dollars per year in funds and services for fiscal year eighteen through fiscal year twenty. We fast-forward to this year, and for the first time in several years, the FY nineteen budget development opened without identification of a significant budget gap. That does not mean that we have a lot of money, that, but that means that, or that we have enough money, but that means that we did not have a budget gap going into fiscal year nineteen. Resources still remain less than what we feel is needed for a high-class, twenty-first-century education in Baltimore City. The district-wide priority for fiscal year nineteen, we call it the blueprint in city schools, and it's actually focused on three pillars. And those pillars are leadership, literacy, and student wholeness. And those are the three pillars that we will be working on in our schools over the next several years in order to increase the, the educational opportunities for our children. This is a budget summary of what we plan for the blueprint over the next three years. The budget is approximately forty-two million dollars through fiscal year twenty-one. We estimate in fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, it'll be about ten million dollars. We're expecting to provide twenty-five million dollars, or approximately sixty percent of this amount, from district funds with another seventeen million dollars or forty percent coming from philanthropic efforts. These are some of the positions that we've added in our fiscal year nineteen budget to support the blueprint work. We have a blueprint coordinator, we've added twenty literacy coaches in, in schools. We have a couple of staff specialists and coordinators, and we also put twenty student-wholeness room associates in schools. And these, these positions are funded by both general funds and federal Title-I funds.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
The literacy coaches?
Mm-hmm.
It costs a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to deploy?
Well, that would be salary and benefits.
That's like salary and fringe?
Salary and benefits, yeah.
Okay.
One of the other pillar, pillars was leadership development, and these are some of the initiatives for fiscal year nineteen to provide that professional development. Another thing that came up, especially after the cult snapped this winter, is our building maintenance. As part of the twenty-first-century agreement, the district is providing three million dollars each year in additional preventive maintenance services in our schools over the next several years.
John, can you go back a slide real quick, sorry? Or one more?
One more?
On, on that, one, two, three, on that third one.
Mm-hmm.
Literacy coach training.
Yes.
What is that?
That is the training that will be provided to the twenty literacy coaches that will go into our schools in fiscal year nineteen.
Oh, you're, is that a slide? One, one slide back?
Want to go one slide back?
Forward, yep, perfect.
Yeah, that's second.
We're recommending that twenty literacy coaches be put into twenty schools in fiscal year nineteen. And the training on the next page is that training that will be provided to those twenty literacy coaches prior to going.
When I'm looking at blueprint coordinator, is that one FTE?
Yes.
Hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars?
Yes.
And the twenty coaches, what are their individual salaries?
I, it's an average, I can get it for you, I don't have it with me right now, but we can send it to you, sure.
You know, and a staff specialist, social emotional learning, one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand? Y'all see that?
Yeah.
That's why, that's why the school system, that's why the school system really runs a deficit all the time. I mean, that's, that's totally, I don't have no more comments.
Are these literacy coaches, are they a new position?
Yes, these, all these positions on this page are recommended, new positions for fiscal year, fiscal year nineteen. We don't currently have any of them now, these are, these are recommended for fiscal year nineteen as part of the blueprint strategy.
What I would like to see is what I've been pushing for a long time. Art, physical education, and music. I mean, these kids, you know, can act out, you know, instead of fighting and doing all the other things, they can express themselves through the art and the music and the physical education. I mean, we could use some of this money for that. I mean, all this is new stuff that we're talking about. And nobody is talking about what we, as the council, have asked the school system to do in terms of art, music, and physical education. I mean, these are things that our kids want and things that they need.
What we can do is when we come back for the next presentation, we will include a slide that shows what the allocations and resources that are being dedicated to those things that you're asking.
Okay, all right. I'm going to see if I can apply to the school system for one of those jobs.
Okay, so go back to facility maintenance. As part of the twenty-first-century agreement, we are putting three million dollars a year into the, into the operating budget for preventive maintenance for our schools. And as you'll see, in fiscal year fifteen was the first three million. And for fiscal nineteen, we are putting an additional fourteen million dollars into budget for preventive maintenance and facility maintenance.
John, can you go back?
Sure.
We're still stuck on the salaries.
All right.
One more back, yep.
I got you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I should have spoken up faster. Mr. Walker, back to number eight, page eight. All these people, these new people that are being hired, how many of them work with children?
All of the literacy coaches and all of the student-wholeness associates will be working with children in schools.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, basically, if you can create all these new positions, then the school system can afford to help us get some college-bound coaches into thirty-three schools because, and they'll be, they're doing something to help kids get into college. So, these are all new positions, and they, I think it's just the titles of them that confound me because it sounds like exactly what everybody thinks we're doing is like
So this is the
It's not, it doesn't sound real. It sounds fuzzy around the edges, and I'll leave it at that for now. But all these positions, these new positions, and it just sounds, feels as if they don't do anything. They go from school to school, and who knows?
So this is, this is the CEO's highest priority, so this is the blueprint work, and so we, so we've done a lot of work to develop the blueprint in terms of the three priority areas that Dr. Santelisus wants to focus on.
I know about, yeah, I know.
And that these are a pivotal strategy of those, so there are intensive sites that have been, that have applied to us and indicated that they want to be intensive sites for literacy, so like Abbottston is one of the literacy sites, I'm pretty certain. And so these are schools that worked with, they came to us and said that they wanted to do this work. And to go deeply into this work, this is about changing the culture of city schools and really putting the emphasis where we think it's most needed to move instruction. And so that's about creating professional learning communities. So these are additional supports in schools that are, that are providing the learning for teachers to be able to move the literacy and instruction of their students in their classrooms. So those schools that have signed up, that have, like, that have applied to do this work, they've got eighty percent of their teachers saying this is what they want to do. And again, this is what we, based on our research of best practice in the country as well as internationally, these are the strategies that have been proven to move instruction and move outcomes for students. And so that's why we're focusing our resources there. And so, again, when we got that commitment of three years of funding from the state and from the city to, to shore up the gap for the next three years, we know that being Baltimore City, that there is a very close scrutiny to any additional resources that we get, and so that we had to come out very clearly with a plan of what we were going to do with those resources. And so that's why we immediately went to work on developing the blueprint. And these are the strategies that we're, we're moving other things around in order to be able to prioritize these resources for those intensive learning sites, to make sure that they have the support they need to be successful, and so that's why they're in here.
It, well, this is not the place to debate. It's just, it's kind of like what the president said. We understand what a teacher is, we know what arts and, in other words, literacy coaches sounds like, I don't know, like, it sounds like somebody that comes in and teaches the teachers how to teach literacy.
Which all the research says is incredibly important. And so that we, that many places you don't see the level of expertise you need to teach literacy at, at the school level, and so you need experts who are coming in.
That's what they are.
That's what they are, so they are, they
We hired them to teach these kids, and
Because what you need to do is to develop the capacity in your, in your teaching force, and teachers need professional learning opportunities that are embedded in their school, embedded in their classroom, based on what's going on in their classes and the specific students that they're serving. And so this is with, will be, we're also doing a lot of outside fundraising for this, so we're doing a lot of work with the philanthropic community to fundraise for this work too, so that we can get outside experts in to train these coaches and develop their capacity to make sure that the teachers in the building are doing collaborative, are collaboratively planning, they're really looking at their data on a regular basis to move instruction, and that they have the expertise at their fingertips about how to really move literacy instruction in their classrooms. So, for example, we just did a walkthrough yesterday with Dr. Santelisus and one of our consultants, Sheila Brown, and all the higher-level staff to really look what's going on in one of the intensive learning sites. And we're trying to create a model of professional learning, which what you, is what you see in other countries that outperform us consistently on international tests, is they have a professional learning community that's embedded in the school, and so that's what we're creating here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I just, this is not the place to debate the issue. It's just like the police department, like, we're going to hire a hundred police, but we're not going to hire a hundred police. We're going to hire, we're going to hire, I don't know what we're going to do, we're going to play overtime, I just
So let's
I, so this is not the time for me to have this discussion.
Then let's set up
We need to hear when the, when the department comes in.
Right, so why don't
What these people, what their professional skills are and what they do for a living.
So, Councilwoman, if I may, can you set up a meeting through Allison with the appropriate folks at BCPSS? And can you guys talk through, so you can articulate exactly what, I think I understand
I can't articulate, I, I need
No, we need to I got you, let me, let me finish. You take some time thinking about what it is exactly that you want. You, you meet with Allison and/or her folks to get that down. And Allison, if you guys could please be prepared to discuss that when you come back for the budget hearing. Is everyone okay with that?
At least what these new positions
Perfect.
they are and what they do and what function they serve, so that it just doesn't feel like I mean, I got to explain, we all have to explain it when we go out and we talk about the schools. And, yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, President Young.
Thank you. I just want to know, how did the school system come up with these salaries? And I want to make sure that if you guys run a deficit, you don't come back and think the city is going to cough up that kind of money for these positions. I like to know, how did you all come up with the figures of a hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars for a blueprint coordinator?
So that's not salary, that's salary and benefits, and so
Regardless, it's still a lot.
So, and it is based on the, you know, that position, coordinator positions exist in, in the organization. We are actually doing, we've been looking, doing a market study that should be coming out soon about salaries. study that should be coming out soon about salaries. What we often find in terms of the market studies, in terms of the market rates of most of our salaries, I can't speak to this specific position, but generally, our salaries are very low compared to the market rate. So, we have a hard time hiring folks. And I know I myself have had to personally get involved in a number of key positions we've tried to hire for from other counties or from other surrounding areas. And the pay cuts that people have to take to come to city schools are substantial. So, these are not out of whack with what's necessary to, to pay people to attract talent to Baltimore.
That's, that's not what I'm hearing. But if we can get a breakdown of what that salary is with their health benefits or whatever, all those positions, we need them broken down to what the real salary is.
Got you. We'll have that for the next, for the next one.
And their qualification and what they do in a given day.
Okay. Colleagues, I've got Burnett, Pinkett, and Schleifer. Colleagues, if the three of you are amenable, I'd like to ask Mr. Walker to speed through his presentation if we can have our questions just till the end. Are all three of you guys okay with it?
I got a burning one.
Yes. Burning one?
Question.
Okay, go ahead.
What is a student wholeness room associate? Is that like a teacher's helper or?
No. So, it's part of the, one of the key focus areas in the blueprint is, is wholeness. And so, again, there are intensive learning sites for wholeness as well. So, again, those were selected by schools applying that wanted to do this work, who recognized that they had culture and climate issues and also, or wanted to learn more about social, emotional learning. One of the strategies, so we're working with a partner called Castle, who is an expert in social, emotional learning. And one of the things that we've learned from other jurisdictions, Cleveland being one of the places that we've looked at, is that these are places where students can go. It's, instead of, if they're having maybe challenges in class, instead of being sent to the office, this is a place to go where there's somebody who's trained to support students, to provide them the kind of support they need to go back into class and be successful. Also identify what is the root cause of the issues they might be having, whether they're behind academically and they need additional tutoring support, say, whether they have things going on at home, so they need other outside resources to support them, or also to build their social and emotional learning capacity. So, their own self-awareness, their own, their relationship-building capacity. So, those are specific skills that there's a lot of evidence that students need development in in order to be effective.
So, I'm gonna, Allison, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm gonna cut you off respectfully. Councilman Schleifer, we're gonna get that resolved in what Councilwoman Clark and the president were talking about, just for the sake of time today, if that's all right. I wanna keep moving here. Mr. Walker, please keep going.
We'll move on. We talked about the building maintenance, fourteen million dollars for fiscal year nineteen. The additional three million that goes in for fiscal year nineteen will be used toward sixteen staff positions for building maintenance and also to an increase in preventative maintenance contracts. This chart, and I'll go through real quick. This chart just shows the breakdown of our preventative maintenance contracts. And you'll see that the majority of our preventative maintenance contracts are for HVAC systems. Now, as far as allocating resources, I didn't put a slide in for revenue. I'll just go through it real quickly. As everyone knows, the majority of our revenue comes from the state and the city. And for fiscal year nineteen, our state revenue is, will be eight hundred forty-nine million dollars. That's down from eight hundred fifty-two million dollars in fiscal year eighteen. And that's primarily the result of the reduction in non-public placement money. The, the money from the city of Baltimore remains flat at two hundred seventy-eight million. It was two hundred and seventy-eight million in fiscal year eighteen. Our federal revenue is down slightly. That is a, a result of a, a little less in E-rate reimbursement money that we expect in fiscal year nineteen. So, they're the big revenue drivers. And in the next presentation, we will have a revenue slide in there. But it's pretty uneventful this year. So, we, we kinda left that out. Our overall general fund allocation for fiscal year nineteen is one point one five six billion dollars. And of that, seven hundred and eighty-two million dollars is in direct allocations to our schools, with another three hundred seventy-four million dollars in centrally budgeted allocations. And centrally budgeted allocations does not mean central office. It just means those things that are budgeted centrally. And we have a slide that kinda breaks that down. For the seven hundred eighty-two million dollars that goes directly to schools, this is the breakdown. You'll see those three hundred thirty-seven million was part of the flexible funding for our schools. Two hundred seven million was locked. That's general ed, special education. One hundred forty-two million dollars went to charter schools. We had unlocked student with disability dollars of seventy-nine million. Thirteen point seven million is allocated for our alternative option program schools. And we had another three million dollars that was in targeted funding. For a total of seven hundred eighty-two million that went directly to schools. Now, the traditional school model update was changed a little bit this year. And we introduced weights for low-income students and for schools serving in concentrations of poverty. We also put something in the, in the funding model that provided what we call baseline funding. So, that we provided, or we came up with a determination of what the minimum amount of dollars that a school would need in order to operate. And we made sure that each school had at least that minimum amount in the baseline services. The last thing that we did in fiscal year nineteen, since this is the first time that we're using this new funding model, there were some winners and there were some losers. So, what was decided that for fiscal year nineteen, we would have a hold harmless. And we would have none of our schools that would lose money as a result of the change in the model. If, if they had a change in enrollment, or if they had a change in the, the percentage of special education children, they may have lost, lost dollars from year to year. But as a result of the, the model itself and the change in the model, we held all schools harmless for fiscal year nineteen. Now, when you get to the charter formula update, this is the big thing. For fiscal year, fiscal year nineteen, you'll see that the, the proposed charter school number is nine thousand seventeen dollars per student. That's down from the fiscal year eighteen adopted number of nine thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars per student.
John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to skip over the charter piece, just do it the next time. Finish the presentation and then come back to the charter piece last, please.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right. This is the general fund budget allocation. As we said, you'll see that sixty-eight percent goes directly to schools. Another fourteen percent is budgeted centrally on behalf of schools. So, full eighty-two percent of our general fund allocations either go directly to schools or are budgeted in support of schools. The other thing I would point out, that you see our central administration is approximately seven percent of our budget. You'll see that, what other one? Non-distributable fringe costs are another six percent. And then the others are like debt service and contingency reserves. The school supports budget that we, we talked about on the previous page is broken down in this way. You see the amount that goes for transportation, for utilities. OOC LA is out-of-county living arrangements that are set up with some of our children, non-public placements. There are certain academic contracts and operational contracts that are budgeted centrally on behalf of schools. School police is another four percent. So, that's what that slide breaks out. And that's what I've got. So, I can go back to charter schools?
Charters, please. Before we start the charters, we had questions from Pinkett and Burnett. Burnett?
Um, I, I'll, I'll take mine, mine offline until we get into the charter.
Copy that. Pinkett. Good. All right. Please proceed.
All right. So, in fiscal year eighteen, in the adopted budget, charter schools got nine thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars per child. In fiscal year nineteen, we're recommending they get nine thousand seventeen dollars per child. The overall amount that went to charters in fiscal year eighteen was approximately one hundred forty-eight million dollars. In fiscal year nineteen, it is reduced to one hundred forty-two million dollars. That, the, the result of that mostly comes from three major things. The first thing being is that fiscal year eighteen charter schools were overfunded. As a result of an error in the formula, charter schools were overfunded by approximately two hundred seventy-nine dollars per child. And charter schools actually should have gone down in fiscal year eighteen at a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. They actually went up in fiscal year eighteen. So, from, from fiscal year seventeen. So, that was a...
The delta was a hundred and fifty dollars, right? You said two hundred seventy-nine, it's, it's two hundred seventy-nine dollars less. They should have gone up a hundred and...
It should have, it should have gone...
They went up a hundred and twenty-nine. They should have gone, in fact, gone down a hundred and fifty is what you're asserting?
Actually, it, it should have gone, it should have gone down. It went up a hundred forty-seven dollars. And it should have went down a hundred and twenty-nine dollars, for a total of two hundred seventy-nine dollars.
Okay. What, when, when it says that the charters, I assume that means the boards, the operators, and the principals, they were, they were all informed in November?
In November of two thousand seventeen, we did two things. When, when we figured, when we found out that we had the error, we called the charter school operators and in several meetings, explained to them that we gave them the extra dollars, explained to them that we understood they're all our schools, they're all our kids. To try to make that adjustment as part of the enrollment adjustment in the fall, may have been something that would have not been, would not have allowed the schools to, to move forward with their programs of fiscal year eighteen. So, the decision was made at the district to pretty much let them keep the overage for fiscal year eighteen with the understanding at that time that the correction would be made in fiscal year nineteen and please plan accordingly. That's the, the gist of what happened in November of seventeen. So, charter schools knew in November of seventeen that they were gonna get less money in fiscal year nineteen as a result of the fact that they got too much money in fiscal year eighteen.
Got it.
So, that, that's the first piece. The other thing that I'll point out is in fiscal year, in fiscal year eighteen, our traditional schools took a cut of two hundred ninety-two dollars per, per student in fiscal year eighteen. So...
From seventeen to eighteen?
From seventeen to eighteen.
Okay. And what's the, I think it's on the previous slide. What's the, oh, they're going up this year.
They're going up this year.
They're going up a hundred and five dollars.
Right. And, and the other part of it is, and I'll just point this out real quickly, we fund charter schools in accordance with state law, which is, which is, you, you take the revenue. We are able to subtract out certain district-wide exclusions like debt service, needs-based exclusions like special education, pre-kindergarten, because those are provided on a per-student basis in the same way to charter schools as they are traditional schools and at no cost to charter schools. So, those things are deducted. And whatever is left is divided by the total number of our kids in the district. And that's per pupil that the charter schools receive each year. So, it's a revenue model that comes directly from state law. The only thing that we changed in fiscal year, fiscal year nineteen was as a result of some analysis that had been done, the district had not, was not recovering enough of their administrative costs for, by taking the two percent in the place, in the formula where they had been taking it. So, the, the suggestion was made and the recommendation was made that we move that two percent up in the formula, which would bring more dollars into the district, which don't fully cover the two percent administrative costs, but bring it a little bit closer. And the only thing, the other thing I'll point out there is when it was, was down lower and we weren't bringing in the, the dollars for the administrative costs, the traditional schools were the ones that were paying the additional cost for the, for the charter schools. So, what we're trying to do as a district is we're trying to come up with a model that is equitable for all of our students. Because we recognize that both traditional schools and charter schools, they're all our schools and we wanna work with them. But we do have to work in accordance with state law and with the state funding formula. So, with that in mind, the five point five million dollars of reduction in the charter schools in fiscal year nineteen is basically three things. The one thing is three point eight million dollars was a result of the error that was made in fiscal year eighteen. Six hundred thousand dollars of, of that five point five million dollars was a result of there projected to be eighty-seven less charter school students in fiscal year nineteen than there were in fiscal year eighteen. And the additional, another one...
Hang on, hang on one second. Thank you. Sorry, John. Can you go back, start back with the six hundred thousand?
Okay. So, it was, it's actually three or four things. The, the five point five million is the three point eight million from the error that was made in fiscal year eighteen. That's three point, six hundred thousand dollars is the result of the fact that there are eighty, projected to be eighty-seven less charter school students in total in fiscal year nineteen than there were in fiscal year eighteen. So, there aren't as many charter school students to multiply the charter school number by. So, that's...
So, the six hundred thousand dollars is, how many, eighty-seven students?
Eighty-seven students.
Times...
Times nine thousand dollars.
In eighty, eighty-seven students times nine thousand?
Well, there, there are some other, there are some other adjustments that come in from the fact that the charter school formula, it was higher in eighteen. We can give you the formula.
Okay, yeah.
It's like a net. It's a net amount. It's a net amount of what eighty-seven kids were going to cost.
Okay. All right. So, the, so the, so there's the three point eight million, which is the, the error from last year.
Correct.
There's the six hundred thousand, which is the projected decreased enrollment.
Correct.
And that's subject to change if enrollment...
At enrollment adjustment, yes.
And when does enrollment adjustment happen?
Uh, we take, we take attendance at, as of nine thirty, as of nine thirty. And then, the enrollment adjustment process goes on after that. We take the official count at nine thirty. Snapshot.
Is projected attendance just the number of kids from the previous year? Or is there, is there some intel that goes into that or?
There, there's a lot of things that go into the projections for enrollment from year to year. And whenever we project enrollment at the district, we always send it out to the principals of each school to give them an opportunity to take a look at them because there's some things that, there's, yes. They, they can come back and say, well, we know such and such is gonna happen next year.
Coming back to school.
We will take those into consideration. Yeah.
Sure, whatever.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. So, the, the three point eight is the error. The six hundred thousand is the change in projected attendance. And that's ninety-seven students across, how many charters? Forty-four charters?
Um, thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. So, ninety-seven students across thirty-four charters. Okay. Keep going. I'm sorry.
And then the last...
Go back to the slide for charters, just so I can, just wanna make sure I fully understand this. Okay.
Okay. And then the other pieces that makes up the one point five million, there are two other pieces. One is, as I said, we moved the two percent up in the calculation that amounted to an additional one point five million dollars in administrative costs that, that will go to the district.
Let's, let's come back to the two percent, 'cause I, I have some questions about that. But the, the three things at the bottom, that's all part of the last category.
That, well, now, that, that, I'll hit that one after we finish this one.
Okay.
That's in addition to. So, it's one, and then the other four hundred thousand dollars that comes to the five point five million are changes in those, those things that are excluded at the top, whether it been debt service, or whether it had been special education or pre-K that would have changed the model. So, that's how, that's the five point five million.
So, so three point eight is the error.
Mm-hmm.
Six hundred K is the enrollment projection.
Mm-hmm.
What was, what was next?
One point five million was the movement of the, of the two percent.
Two percent, which I wanna come back to. And then...
And then four hundred thousand dollars was the change based on the fact that the, the exclusion numbers in the, in the state mandated model changed.
Is that the sick leave, tuition, and loan?
No, no, no. That's, we'll get into that one now.
Oh, wait. Okay. Go back to the...
So, that's the five point five million.
Wait.
Okay.
Three point eight plus six is four point four million.
Four point four.
Plus one point five.
Is five point nine.
Five point nine.
And then there was a, a decrease in, as a, as a result of changes in the exclusions in the, in the charter school model for fiscal year nineteen.
Decrease in...
Of four hundred thousand.
Say that again. Decrease in...
A decrease in, changes in the exclusions in the model. Special education may have, may have changed, or, or pre-K may have changed as a result of the fact that we had less kids.
So, it's five point nine minus four hundred K brings you to five.
Brings you to five point five. And that's the five point five.
Okay.
Okay. The next piece that was recommended for fiscal year nineteen is there are certain non-distributable fringe charges that charter schools have never been, had never had to pay for before. The first was sick leave conversion. And as, you know, I think the city has the same, the same benefit as school district employees, that they're allowed to cash in a certain number of their sick leave days if they don't use them at the end of the year. That sick leave conversion cost was borne by the district centrally prior to fiscal year nineteen. We're recommending, since it is a part of salary cost and, and charters are responsible for paying the salaries of their, of their teachers, that, that sick leave conversion cost be borne by the, by the charter school. That's the first one. The second one is tuition reimbursement. We have tuition reimbursement program for our teachers. And in the past, all tuition reimbursement was handled centrally with central budget. What we're recommending for fiscal year nineteen is the charter schools pick up that portion of tuition reimbursement that is applicable to charter schools.
Why would we, why if traditional schools are not bearing that cost, why would, why should charters?
That's why there's a difference between the nine thousand and the five thousand. Because we, we do a lot of things centrally that we do not, that we do not charge our traditional schools for.
So, they are effectively paying for it. Their per pupil is lower because there are certain things they're getting centrally as a service. So, they're getting as a service as opposed to getting the cash and paying us back. But that is why their per pupil is less in traditional schools, is 'cause they're paying for that as a service.
Okay.
You're adding that cost onto the charter.
That's correct.
Okay. So, sick leave, tuition reimbursement.
And the last one is long-term substitutes. In the past, long, if, if you have a teacher vacancy in a charter school and they've been out for a couple of weeks, we send a long-term substitute out. Previously, that had been handled centrally by the district. What is being recommended is for fiscal year nineteen, is the charter schools will pay for long-term substitutes, if in fact a long-term substitute has to go to their school. If it's, if it's to cover a vacancy, charter schools will have the, the additional money to pay for But that, those three things, in a way, traditional schools in the past had been, had been paying the cost of those things that have been going to charter schools.
Okay, so let's go back to the, what's the two percent administrative fee?
Okay. According to state law, we are allowed to take a two percent administrative fee off the revenue model in order to cover centralized administrative expenses that cover all of our schools, both traditional and charter.
From, from every school?
From, I'm, I'm sorry.
You're allowed to take a two percent-
We're allowed to take it as part of the revenue model that I explained that brings you down to the, the charter school per pupil. We're allowed to take the revenue from the city and the state and the federal, and then we're able to take out certain district-wide exclusions.
So you can take two percent of the total?
Two percent after district-wide, district-wide exclusions.
What's the per pupil, what's the per, per pupil for the system before any of this stuff happens, like sixteen?
It's about sixteen.
We can calculate.
It's about sixteen, that's about sixteen. You're saying you take two percent off of that before you do anything else? Is that what the administrative fee is? Or am I-
It's actually a little bit less than that, because we take out certain district-wide exclusions like debt service, and, and before we, before we do that two percent calculation.
But I thought charters don't pay debt service.
Well, according to the state, the state funding formula, we are able to deduct debt service for charter schools, and-
Okay, so-
So, but yet there's not really an administrative cost for debt service, so we don't take the two percent off before that. They shouldn't pay two percent on debt service, so we take that off first, and the two percent comes off on things like special ed, where there is an administrative cost.
So you have a number of like twelve, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars, something like that per student, whatever it is, after you take off some basic stuff. And then you say, I'm going to take two percent of that cost off for every school across the system, all one hundred eighty-five schools, or no?
Traditional schools pay more than, I mean, the services cost a lot more than two percent. Two percent is just what the state guidance tells us we can use for charter schools. So it's not enough, it doesn't cover the services as part of the issue, but that's what the guidance says. So two percent is the amount we take off, and, you know, I think if you look at any, any entity that charges an administrative fee for something, whether it's a state grant, whether it's you're a professor at Hopkins and Hopkins is taking off an administrative fee for the services they're providing, two percent is well below what you ever see as a, as a percentage. And that's when you're really just asking, acting as a fiscal agent. We have an entity that partners with us who's a great fiscal agent for us, and all they do is, you know, they're our fiscal agent, sometimes for grants, and they charge seven percent. And that's standard, that's not above market, that's standard, and that's just as a fiscal agent. This, these services are, include things like if you need legal defense for a special ed case, teacher recruitment, payroll, it's a lot of services, so two percent doesn't cover it.
So, so the, the state law says, school system thou is allowed to take two percent off of, not your per pupil, but after you do some basic stuff across the system, that per pupil for charter schools.
Up to.
Okay, and that's in, is that, that's in, where's that memorialized? Is that in state law or in the state funding formula?
It's in, there's guidance, so this is what's in litigation. I mean, so it's in guidance, as well as then there's lots of case law about it, so it's been, there's lots of case law. There's not like one place where it says definitively how the formula should work.
So it's not mandatory, it's-
What the original state guidance said was two percent, and then there's case law, different cases at different levels that, that weighed in about it, too.
But it's not thou shall, it's, it's, this is what's recommended.
We followed what the guidance was from the state from the beginning, because it, you know, it was guidance and-
I'm not taking it side either way, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
So it's, the state is saying you should consider taking two percent.
It said that the, that the amount we could take for admin was, was two percent.
Up to two percent, or at least two percent?
It said two percent.
It's two percent, it's no more. We don't have discretion necessarily to take more than two percent.
So there's no discretion on the school system's part?
Well, the discretion is in terms of like, about services that are outside that two percent, so what's included in the two percent and what services are outside the two percent.
Oh, so your discretion is, does service and fit within, is it covered by the two percent or not? If not, can I charge for that or not? So, sorry, I'm breaking my own rule here. I'll be better, I promise. So, the, what are the other, what are the other school systems? Does every school system in the state that has charters do the two percent?
They all have different, their formulas are all slightly different, but a number of them charge services outside of the two percent. Where the, where the jurisdiction has the largest number of charter schools, so the impact is largest here.
Right.
But Frederick County is a county where there's been, there's been, you know, court cases about their formula, they do charge services outside of the two percent.
Okay. So, so we've got the, the five point five, let me go back. So, so the total cut across the system for all charters combined is the sum of five point five million-
And one point eight.
And one point eight.
Correct. Seven point three.
Seven point three. It's not five point five, it's not nine point one, it's seven point three.
That's correct.
So that's what, that's what all those other little categories are?
Yeah, so there's two, there's, it sounds like there's-
Sick leave.
Yeah, so there's, item one is the, is the, so maybe it's just the way this slide is, is written, no offense, I'm just trying to line item things in a spreadsheet here. There's the three point eight error, there's the six hundred K enrollment change, there's the two percent fee for one point five million, which was not charged in the past, correct?
No, it was charged in the past, but it was charged in a different place in the formula. It was charged after we had taken out needs-based exclusions like special education and pre-kindergarten. And there are administrative costs for those, too, so we just moved two percent above that.
So since you moved it above it, it means more of a, right, so what, what's the difference? What was it last year?
It was still two percent.
No, no, what was the sum?
The sum, I, I'll get it for you, I don't know off the top of my head. Yeah, we can get it for you.
So I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the, what the, so we know the five point five is, is the difference. No, 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 let me take a step back.
It's the one point five, it's one point five more that we're taking out, because again, we didn't, it was taken out after we-
Well, it could be a whole lot more than one point, the one point five is the delta, the difference.
Is the delta.
Got it. Okay. All right, so item one, error, three point eight million. Item two, change in enrollment, six hundred thousand. Item three, change in where the two percent-
Fell in the formula, exactly.
One point five million. Decrease in changes in exclusions in the model is a surplus of four hundred K for the-
Four hundred thousand the other way, that's correct.
And then, item four is non-distributed fringe charges to recoup this year, one point eight million.
That's correct.
So it's among three categories. Are these non-distributed fringe charges, those are things that you haven't charged charters for?
We haven't charged charter schools before.
Have not.
Have not in the past.
So, my, Mr. Chair, so do I, five point five million, we know what they all came from, and then one point eight is the miscellaneous other stuff?
That's correct.
So then, so thirteen, seven, seven point three?
Seven point three.
More, or less?
Less.
Less to charters.
But of, but of that seven point three, three point eight million was a correction of an error in eighteen when charter schools received too much funding.
Correct.
So it's not really seven point, it's a seven point three reduction from eighteen to nineteen, but if, if the model would have been done correctly in eighteen, it would have been three point eight million dollars less than the seven point three.
Or vice versa.
Correct.
Seven point three minus three point eight.
Correct.
That would be, what, three point five?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so in terms of the, the, am I good, Councilwoman?
If I could just, if I could just say, if I could just say one more thing, you also have to take off the six hundred thousand, because the six hundred thousand's a decrease in enrollment. That, that had nothing to do with the model, that had to do with the fact there are less kids, so you, you take the three and a half and then you take the six hundred thousand off. So it's actually two point nine is what we're looking at as the difference from-
I don't think anyone has grounds to complain about the six hundred K.
We're, we're just talking about what life is like.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're a principal, and you walk in, and this is your formula.
So, is this, so this is obviously spread out based on pupil, per pupil-
Per pupil.
Across the schools, right?
Correct.
So if I have, if I only have ten kids in my charter school, my, it would be ten times-
Nine thousand seventeen dollars, or whatever.
Yeah, it would be a difference of a hu, hu, two hundred and seventy-one dollars, right? So if I had ten students versus a hundred students, it's all, it's all prorated.
Yes, that's correct.
Proportional.
Correct.
So, so in terms of the, the school board budget, or the, the system's budget, so you get a fixed amount from the state based on the eight or nine upteen formulas that exist, you get an amount from us based on MOE, I'm sure there's some formula that has to deal with how you get federal money, and then you get dollars from other-
And that, and that's very small.
Okay, and then you get dollars from other sources.
Yes.
And then you, and then you have a sum pot of money, and then you take that sum pot of money, and based on guidance and state law, you, you figure out how to disseminate that to schools?
That's correct.
Predominantly based on per pupil?
Correct.
And, and type of school, and what type of offerings they have, and percentage of students that meet certain criteria?
Yes.
Okay. And then the school sys, the CEO's office, or the administrative part of it, comes up with a proposed budget and sends that to the school board for its consideration. School board approves or disapproves budget, and then approved budget is sent to, well, you're already getting, you're already getting the set amount from the city regardless of what you decide to do with-
And the state.
So for all intensive purposes, your budget is set.
It's done.
That's right.
We don't get any additional revenue, we don't have any taxing authority or any of those kinds of things, and once you get past the, the state and the city revenue, there's very little left.
And I think, I think part of the issue has been that, you know, as the state, as you know, the, the state has been doing its Kerwin work, and so they have not inflated the, the state formula, and so by their own estimate, in two thousand sixteen, if they had just inflated the current formula the way it was supposed to be by law, we would have gotten in two thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand fifteen, we would have gotten two hundred and ninety million dollars more a year, so that should, would have been inflated since then. And their own study of the, that was about adequacy, the APA study said that to provide an adequate education to students in Baltimore, again in two thousand sixteen, said that we should have been getting three hundred and fifty-eight million dollars more a year. So the challenge is that none of our students are being funded at the way that they should be, they are all under-resourced, and as that, that pot has gotten increasingly tight, it has been very hard on all of our schools. And so, and that's true for charters, and that's definitely true for traditional schools, it's gotten increasingly tight, and there's just not enough resources to, to, to meet the needs of our students that they should be getting under the law and under the state's responsibility to provide an adequate education.
Got it. So, so just going through, we got these, these five line items, right? The, the one point eight for the, not sure, okay, so, item four was the four hundred thousand surplus, that's a bonus, no one's complaining about that. Item two is the change in enrollment, no one really has any grounds to complain about that. Item one is the error on three point eight, that was clearly communicated, I'm sure that the system has evident documentation to support it.
Absolutely.
That was beyond overly communicated.
Absolutely.
So, so let's go to the, so I think what we're really talking about now is the one point five for the two percent admin fee, and the one point eight for the non-distributed fringe. When were the charter operators, principals, and boards notified of those two changes?
When, when the, when the formula go out?
And the reason I ask that question, I guess if I speak on behalf of the charters, is that the, the sense that I've gotten, and I know my colleagues have gotten several of these, these emails and concerns and phone calls, the sense that I'm getting is that they feel like, I'm not taking a position, I'm just telling you what I'm, what I'm sensing, is that they're getting squeezed every single year more and more and more, and that's why I asked the question, because it, it sounds like you handled the three point eight million the right way. You did, you made a mistake and you, and you handled it, and you let them know you got more, it, it's like, if, if, if I deposited a check for ninety-five dollars in my bank account online, and I accidentally put nine hundred and fifty, it would show on my balance for a couple of days that I had nine hundred and fifty in there when I did it. The bank isn't kind enough to let me keep that, you guys let them keep it, and-
Exactly.
Okay, so that's good. And the enrollment, like, I don't see anyone complaining about it, and, and the decrease, you know, the four hundred K bonus, that's wonderful, but they feel like they're getting squeezed each and every year. And I'm wondering when you communicated that these changes were coming, and I think the next set of questions that us on the council are going to get is, well, if you did these two squeezes this year, what's to prevent you from doing more squeezes next year? When does it, when does, when does the bleeding stop? When do we say we're finally on a level playing field? And again, I'm not advocating for charter versus traditional.
It's completely a legitimate question. Yeah, and I think, so John probably remembers better than I do when the communications went out for the budget per pupil.
I believe it went out in January or February. As soon as we had determined what the recommendations were going to be, they went out, you know, prior to the budgets being released.
And you met with charter schools to go through it. So it, that's about when it went out, but in terms of your point about, you know, I mean, I do think the challenge is for any of our schools is about predictability of cuts, and that is really hard for schools to absorb. That's why we didn't want to make the change mid-year last year, because it's almost, it's very difficult for schools to, to take a change like that in the middle of the year when they've made their hiring decisions. So I, I absolutely hear the concern about predictability and people wanting to know what the future is. So we, that makes sense. We have committed to, and we had one initial meeting of working with charter schools to go through the budget and talk about what are the other issues that, like, looking at the funding formula, what are the services that are being provided, what are the ones that are not being covered by the two percent, and go through that. We have done that before with charters on two other occasions, and not ever totally reached agreement on that, but we were committed to try, to do it again, and do it transparently in the public. I mean, traditional schools have an interest in this as well, so this needs to be a public conversation, too, because this is, this is, the real challenge that you're, that everybody's experiencing is again, because our, we are underfunded at, by the state, and we are not being provided an adequate education, none of our schools have the resources they need to do what they, that, what, what our students deserve, to provide what our students deserve, and that is true for the charters as well, and so all of us need to be having that conversation at the state level, that this is unacceptable for our students, and we need more resources. And so, yes, we are trying to make it more predictable, and we want to have this process to go through that funding formula, but part of the challenge is, as that pressure has gotten tighter, because the resources have gotten more constrained, the disparity between the charter funding formula and way the traditional schools have been funded has been more glaring. And traditional schools took major cuts last year, very significant cuts, and so we, and they already were underfunded in terms of the parity between the two formulas, that has been true for a long time. And so we are trying to, at little bits at a time, try to close the gap between the And so, we are trying to, little bits at a time, try to close the gap between the inequity between the two formulas, but as much as we can without making it, you know, too hard on charters all at once. So there are other, there are other services that are not included, but we do want to meet with the charters to sit down and talk about what those services are and what's, and try to come up with an agreement that is predictable. Because it is hard for schools to take unanticipated cuts and all of our schools have unfortunately been having to do that for several years.
Okay, so, and thank you for the context just to be, to the point. The answer to my question was January of eighteen.
Yes.
Of eighteen. Okay, and are there, I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Clark.
Oh, well, you just started to talk about the question I was gonna ask. So, we are all underfunded and we don't have the money we deserve and we should sue somebody and I hope Kerwin works out for the future of our kids and the city.
So do I.
But my question is, is this a disparity issue? So, in other words, what I wrote down here is, why? You've got the money to add all those, that page of people that we will talk about more later, the people that are part of the pillars, the new hires and coordinators and whatever they are. So they're coming in. Now, I'm not saying that's comparable to the money, amount of money before us. But, why was it decided that, now, I understand about the mistake, but everything else, and yes, the population has decreased and everybody is equally sharing in that, in that.
Correct.
Whether they're a traditional or they're, you know, a charter school. But, aside from all that, these are voluntary, these are strategic decisions about, for example, going to the max of the two percent, including more in that maximum, or, not including more, but taking the two percent when more things are in it and when the number is higher, et cetera, et cetera. So, what was, what were the reasons for doing this at this time this way? When there was, is ample money, well, not ample, but there is extra money, new people are being hired.
Let's just be clear, it's not extra money, it's a reprioritization of resources that we have.
Okay, so that's what it is, so, is it part of the reprioritization within the school system of pillars? Is it part of trying to bring the traditional schools and the charter schools into a more comparable position? Even, even though they do come from different places in terms of buildings and...
That's the idea.
The like.
The idea is there will never be...
So, yeah, so, go.
The charter school, the charter school per pupil and the traditional school per pupil will never be the same. And it's because charter schools provide different services on their own than our traditional schools, than our traditional schools don't.
I'm sorry, apologies.
However, we are, we are doing our best to try to come up with a formula that is equitable to all of our kids, both our charter school kids and our traditional kids. And that's part of what some of these adjustments that we're doing now and we're trying to do, we're trying to bring, we're trying to make it equitable for all of our kids that they all get, they all get the same resources to start out.
And it is, and so John's right, so it is, it is an equity issue, and I think one other thing, again, is, I just think in general as the resources have grown tighter, that has become more glaring. And then also, we did work with Educational Resource Strategies this year to look at our formula, and one of the things that they did was they did a comparison, an apples-to-apples comparison of the charter funding to traditional school funding, which we've done before, and again, identified that the inequities in it. And they specifically did a formula where they took the total resources that we get, the costs that come off the top for things like special ed for debt service and so on, got down to the charter per pupil, and then to give an, so that there could be an apples-to-apples comparison to the fair student funding formula, then took off those costs that are paid for centrally for traditional schools, because as you said, the traditional schools, we provide them a building, they don't pay for it, we turn on their lights, they don't pay for it, where charters do. Yeah, it comes off as a service as opposed to cash. So it did that comparison, but in that comparison, there was a line that could not be explained other than the traditional schools paying for services that charter schools are receiving. So that was in that study. And there, as we're watching our schools, you know, as the impacts on our schools, you have to take that seriously into consideration because it does have an impact on our schools.
Because I don't want my question to dominate the, more time than it should. So, I guess we probably, in the course of our review, need to look at the comparables, the way, I mean, you have a study.
Yeah.
And, and one of the things I would say, and I don't know what the comparables are at this point, I just don't. But I would say that this is a lot all at one time. You know, so, can you do, it sounded like it started out at three point eight, and then it just, everything sort of loaded on. That's what's, that's what somewhat impressed, impacted me when I looked at letters coming from the schools, charter schools, was it's like, whoa, wait a minute, it's this and now it's that, and here's this also, and I think it's like, it all just kind of loaded on in a single year in which there was money, and so some of the money that is being, did traditional schools get more per pupil?
Yes, but remember, they got significantly less last year. So this is, so I think what we should, we can provide is the percentage of the cut for traditional schools last year compared to the percentage cut this year for charter schools. And so, it is, it is, there are other costs that are not being paid for out of the fee, so it's not all of them. We tried to make it more modest, as modest as we could. But the reality, part of the work that ERS did was looking at, again, when we looked at the funding formula for fair student funding, one of the things that we heard from the community and from our board that we wanted to do is we wanted to put more resources into schools that were high poverty. And what we found is that, in order to do that, which is a good thing. And in order to do that though, we had to take, the only place we could take resources from out of the fair student funding pot was out of high schools, traditional high schools. High schools took big, big cuts last year. And so, it was just very hard to look at that work and look at what we all think we value, which is putting more resources in high poverty schools. But the only way we could do that out of the fair student funding pot was to take it out of, out of high schools that had taken major hits last year and then not continue to look at the equity issues with the charter formula. Just I don't know how we keep ignoring it.
We got too many moving parts here. Right now, I think I'd like to ask our chairman if, when we have a hearing, or is this the hearing?
No, it's another one.
I know, school budget. Let's look at, look at this study, if we could get a summary of the study that this group was paid to do and what, how the apples and the oranges turn out. I mean, how do traditional schools make out in this? Is that, if it's equity? And if not, where did the money go? Where, I mean, if it's not, if we haven't brought it to a certain level or if it hasn't been brought to a certain equity position that could be justified, and maybe if it, then, where's the money? And so that's, not for now, this moment, but it is for, what are we doing? I mean, what are we approving to be done? And what's the background and where's the money? Now, we don't have enough, let's start out by saying, "We don't have enough money." It's not fair the money we don't have. I have, I have three grandchildren in that system, they're in traditional schools, and I had four kids. So I'm not saying this like I'm looking through a telescope or something. But, and we never had enough money, and now we have, we don't have enough even more. So, no question there, we deserve it and we're not, and we've been robbed by the state of Maryland. But in this issue, if we could see the apple and the orange and how it came to be and where the money went, I would appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay with you, when we have a hearing. Apple and orange, how did the changes in what's happening to the charter school per pupil? And now the traditional school, how did those, that apple and that orange come out of this? And if there's, if it's about equity, how did that work? And, and by the way, where did the money go?
Absolutely, so do we have, you guys must have some type of...
We're gonna, we're gonna put that together, that was the conversation we were just having.
Have you guys done a study already on that?
The study has been done, and we will...
Oh, it's already been done?
Yeah, they've done it.
It's been done, we will put it together and we will get it, we will get it to you.
It's completed?
Yes.
Did we get it in advance?
Yeah, we'll get it to you.
How soon do you think we can get that?
We can get it to you today or tomorrow, yeah.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Thank you.
Tomorrow probably, just because...
Okay, colleagues, anyone else for city schools overview? Anyone else, colleagues? Anyone else for city schools? Okay, we're going to go into recess. We are slated to start at, we're gonna go into recess on this until May thirty-first.
Oh.
Thursday evening, and I know you guys got a couple takeaways to get back to us.
Yep.
We're in recess on this one. For everyone else who's here, we're gonna hang tight for five to ten minutes. There are a number of our colleagues in the back, four or five of them, that are in the process of finishing up meetings right now. Normally, I start all my hearings on time, but this is probably the most important hearing of the year that we have, where we listen to your concerns. So I think it's important that all of our colleagues are out here to listen to what your concerns are. So for that, please accept my apology that we're gonna wait a few minutes to start until our other colleagues can get out here, so.
Thank you.
We'll save, we'll save five, ten, nine minutes from now.
Nine minutes.